No absent with regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest, anybody? And you can certainly declare at the time the item agenda comes up. Good so far. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? So our additions, oh, I can't, I'm not used to doing it on the computer. The additions are going to go under number 10. I'm going to put 100 meals update. Is there anything else anybody wanted to add? Councillor Dayer, no, Councillor Cleveland first, then Councillor Dayers.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. First one is deer population.
Okay, so under 10B, we've got deer population. There's no problem there, we've got enough.
Yeah, I'd like to increase it if I possibly could. And number two would be oceanographic. I don't even know how to.
Institute?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, okay, so we're going to, 10C will be Oceanographic Institute.
Thank you, Your Worship.
You're welcome. And Councillor Dayers?
Just committee appointments, please.
What's that?
Committee appointments.
Okay, committee appointments, and we're putting that under 10D. Anything else anyone wanted to add to the agenda or remove? CAO?
Your Worship, I do have an in-camera item concerning negotiations, if we have time today.
Yep, sure. And I think there's a couple of things we need to discuss in camera. Regardless, go ahead there, Councillor McLeod.
Jeff, I heard you, Jeff, recently that you were thinking about switching our Wednesday committee of the whole meetings to a Thursday. I just wanted to bring that up in case it was, you know.
Good. You had nothing to add then? Okay, so I'm, if there's nothing else I'm looking for, an approval of the agenda with the additions, please. Deputy Mayor?
Second.
Second by Councillor Cleveland, any more discussion? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Thanks, folks. Scroll back up. Okay, so there's no presentations today. Now, I will say this, because Byron, you're here for a reason. We can, with, with Council's permission, if you want to, otherwise you're going to be here for another couple hours. So is, are we okay, Counsel, to move his issue up? And then Byron doesn't have to stay, even though I'm sure it's better than a movie at times. Okay, so we are, I read this today. So we're at nine for action D, so Byron Boudreaux regarding 351 Main Street. Did you want to, yeah, how do we do this now, Jeff? Oh, oh, good, thank you. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, for this quick, I asked to get in and you put me in here right away, thank you very much. What it is, is there's debris that's going off, coming off the roof of the building next to the parking lot that I own, where Toots is. The problem is, is if I don't have revenue coming in on the parking lot, then therefore I can't write off any of my taxes, I can't write off any of my expenses, and it's a big, big issue for me. I did ask, I don't know who it was, before John Sullivan, but I talked to John Sullivan, he was a building inspector at the time, and somebody prior to that, and they said, you know, it was going to be fixed. Then I talked to Glenn Muse the other day, which was probably about a month ago, and he said it was going to be fixed. Then I talked to Steve, the gentleman that owns it, and he says he can't get on the roof because it's dangerous and not allowed, can't work on it or something. I said, I've never heard of that before, but I don't know, if he, he's got a business in his, in his building, but yet he can't work on the roof. I, I don't know, and I just here for answers, that's all.
Okay. All right, so CAO, do you want it, because I think it's, it's not just your, it's everybody's concern, I can tell you that.
Yes, yes, and I mean downtown's looking.
And it has been for some time.
Yeah, downtown's looking beautiful, I mean, it's got to look really nice.
That whole building.
Yeah.
Go ahead, CAO.
Okay, so we received Mr. Boudreaux's letter and his concern, and it's legitimate. You know, we, we see the issue. Glenn has given me a record of, of sort of the interactions with the owner about that issue. It does date back to pre-COVID, so it's been, it's been a while that he's needed to get the roof done. I know he had difficulty, or at least we were told he had difficulty securing a contractor during that, the first wave, we'll say, during the early spring. To our knowledge, obviously, it hasn't been rectified through the summer, when there was perhaps ample opportunity to do so. Glenn has issued an order that within 30 days the work be done. One of the remedies we have available to us is to, is to do the work ourselves. But Mr. Boudreaux's concern about debris coming off that roof, you know, they're legitimate concerns, and, and, well, he said himself how it, how it is affecting his commercial operation next door. So the building abuts the sidewalk, it is, it abuts its neighbors on both sides, and it does create a, a problem if that roof is, roof is not maintained, which clearly it has not been.
Okay, so 30 days?
That's, that's our standard notification on a, on a dangerous non-sightly, he's been cited for that. What Mr. Boudreaux stated about not being able to get on the roof, building inspector was presented with that same information, but, you know, our building inspector does know of, of jobs on, on high roofs within the town currently going on, and was, was not accepting of that as a, as a reason not to do the work.
Good, good, okay. Councillor Hatfield?
When was the citation given? Like you say, it's 30 days, but how, how many days is?
I haven't, well, I shouldn't say I haven't seen the citation, I'm sure it's in my inbox. I'm going to say last week, but I'm not, I can't say for sure.
Okay, so that's probably another two or three more weeks, and then?
Well, obviously, we would like him to undertake the work, and it would be in his best interest to undertake the work himself, rather than having us hire the contractor and place the, the bill on his property as a lien, which will attract interest as well. He has no say in the selection of the contractor if we undertake the work. Or the materials, or, you know.
Okay, so, so as soon as that 30 days is that? We're in there?
I understand that situation, I appreciate it very much, and, and if it's not too much trouble, when he does start, or whoever starts, I'd like to be notified, that's all, just so that, like, keep an eye on the cars, I don't get, you know, don't get any debris on it.
I guess I was sort of.
Anyway, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor and Counsel, and I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas too, as well.
Thanks, Byron.
Thank you, Byron.
I think somebody might have a question here.
Oh, sorry.
I'm fine, not really directed, not really directed to Byron, but I'm, based on my experience with the building owner in question, I don't want to wait the 30 days, I want to start planning now, so on day 30, we can do what your suggestion that we do.
Yeah, which?
I mean, it's not, I bet you a coffee for the whole group here on that it doesn't happen by the 30th. Sorry about that, Jeff, I feel strongly, it's a part of Main Street that we can do better with, and we need to work with Byron. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, and that's, I think that's what I was trying to get to when, trying to dig to see, how do we do it fast?
So I can, I can advise Counsel that I did receive a phone call today. I was unable to take the call when it came in, I tried to return the call and I got voicemail, so there is some communication being attempted with me by the property owner, so, you know, there may be a possibility that we can get something going sooner. You know, I can, if, if it's Counsel's wish to, to take that on prior to the 30 days on his behalf, then I can certainly offer that if he's having difficulty getting a contractor, and rely on our building inspector's contacts and knowledge of workmanship to, to help us get a contractor on site. But that's the other issue, once we say go, there might not be a roofing contractor sitting on his hands right now, you know, waiting for the opportunity, so we'll do our best. And, and I appreciate the issue.
No, I appreciate you really, you know, listening to me right away, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks, Byron.
And I should say, nobody does more roofs in Yarmouth, I don't think, than Byron.
Thank you. Okay, I don't know what you need from us, but, but I think there's more that could be said. I probably.
I think it would, you know, I know, I think, I think it would be advantageous for me and for, for everyone if there was a motion considered today to, to expedite by whatever means we have at our disposal, and so within the 30-day period of the order, it will be by negotiation. But to, to do the work and have the, have the bill applied to the, to the property owner's taxes, and he can come in the next day and pay it off and no interest, we, if with that motion, I can ask Glenn to begin to line up a contractor in case it doesn't get done by the owner, and if my communication with him results in making something happen sooner, then, then we can do that. But a motion to, to expedite that would, would be helpful.
This is, I mean, this is a safety issue. Go ahead, Councillor Lesser.
I'd like to make that motion, that we try to expedite the process. I, I do think we need to give the landlord an opportunity to try to fix it, but I think we, we can't wait until 30 days and then look at hiring somebody, and try to find somebody and then wait a few more months, so I'm not sure if we get the wording on, on the CAO's motion. So maybe to expedite the, the necessary repairs at, I think it's, is it 205? I don't have the address in front of me right now, but I will fill in the address, that we know the location, as soon as possible, and, and so I'll take, take it on to do whatever's possible to get that done soon.
Okay, so that's motions made, second by Councillor McLeod. Okay, you had your light on again, I keep seeing it, but I don't get to press it. Okay? Any more discussion on that? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried, thank you. Somebody needs to get in there and check that whole building, by the way. Go ahead.
Your Worship, November 13th was the date of the order.
Okay, so another couple, that's not bad. Another couple of weeks, but do her as fast as we can. Thanks for that, CAO. Okay, all right, staff report, CAO report, first off. So any questions for the CAO, and I know I had a couple, and I'll probably never find them. Okay, so we have something further down the agenda on accessibility and getting seven people on that, and then task number two here is to get increase from seven to nine. So maybe when we get there, we just make that switch? Is that, is that fair? Okay. Did you want to update us on the first item, or is that in camera, or what is, there's something new there?
Yeah, so I have, I have advised Counsel by email, I believe, that Compass Housing Co-op, who we were hoping to partner with on the Rapid Housing Initiative, that they've decided through their analysis that it wasn't feasible to proceed without operational support from the province of Nova Scotia. There is not a program currently available to provide that support, and so they will not be proceeding with the Rapid Housing Initiative application. That being said, they, they continue to, Natalie continues to, to have conversations with them about housing opportunities and development within, within the town, and so we're hopeful that through continuing that, that relationship, or keeping that door open, that maybe, maybe some things will come together and we'll see some affordable housing being developed by, by the Housing Co-op.
Good stuff. Good. Any questions for, for Jeff? And, and the, the investigation into the boarded-up properties? Where are we on that one?
So Your Worship, later on the agenda, there is a, I believe it's still on there, the boarded-up building bylaw, vacant building bylaw?
Maybe I might have missed it, but I.
No, we, sorry?
Oh, okay.
No, 18.
Got her.
No, not there. So, so Natalie has, has undertaken the lead on that with, with our solicitor to, it isn't on the agenda today, to, to update our vacant building bylaw, and they've done a major rework, and so once that is, if that is passed, then we have, we have a better tool to work with.
Right on. Okay. Any questions for the CAO? Good? Okay. I'm trying to maneuver this, this whole agenda thing. Fire department, get anything new for us there on fire? Well, I know it's their report, but we're good? Okay. Operational, so Chad is here. If there's any questions for Chad, and we also have the crosswalks on Water and the crosswalks on Parade, so Chad, if you want to come up, maybe we'll, we'll, were there any general questions for operations before we go into? Okay, so the, the first one was the crosswalks on Water Street, did you want to address that one?
Yep, so as you can see in, in my memo, we took a, a bit of a comprehensive look at, at Water Street, and there are three crosswalks currently between Forest and South. So there is quite a span between crosswalks, so it is warranted that we should perhaps consider the installation of at least one crosswalk. Now, since the memo, I think another report, I think Councillor Lesser has indicated that there was a near miss near Water and Brown, so I really didn't consider that when I drafted this memo a couple of weeks ago. So the reason why I chose Water and.
Lovett?
Yes, sorry, Lovett. We did, we did monitor pedestrian activity within that area, and that seems to be the more common place where people will cross Water Street. There's a restaurant and the boardwalk area for the, for the waterfront, so it seems to be the most appropriate. I mean, we're not going to please everybody with the, with the location that's chosen. And, and the, the location at Water and Brown, we looked at that several years ago, the former traffic authority looked at that, and Water and Brown, because the, the street geometry is a little different than the, than the street geometry at Water and Lovett. Water and Lovett is, has a lot of traffic congestion, park stalls, parking on both sides of the street, so the sightlines for pedestrians aren't very, very good. Water and Brown's a bit different, you don't have parking on the street, so the sightlines for pedestrians and, and vehicles are, are a little better, so I don't know at this point if I would recommend a crosswalk there. I know it probably doesn't help the situation at the school board. And it's, there's several factors to consider when, when, when recommending a new crosswalk, and so we have to look, or I look at this a bit objectively, I know there's always the human factor, so I understand there was a near miss at Water and Brown, but one near miss doesn't necessarily warrant the installation of a crosswalk.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't want to sound insensitive, but that could have been an incident where maybe the pedestrian wasn't paying attention, or was distracted, or the driver was distracted, so.
Yeah, you're, you're right, so there's not a crosswalk in this town, or a space in this town that there hasn't been a near miss. So we have to put them in, and you can't put them on every block either, right?
Yeah, and another thing I've noticed with crosswalks, crosswalks give the pedestrian a bit of a sense, false sense of security. So another example, not on the agenda today, but I've been looking at a request for crosswalk on South Main Street, near the golf course. And, but what I've witnessed is, if you don't have a crosswalk, pedestrians are a little more vigilant. They're more aware of the traffic, and will take the opportunity to cross when the traffic allows. And on Water Street, even though it's, it's a fairly busy street, the traffic is intermittent enough, it provides pedestrians ample time to cross without a crosswalk. So it's not, it's not cut and dry, it's not always cut and dry, it's not as easy as, you know, we receive a request for a crosswalk and we should install one.
So you recommend the Lovett Street, so is that a done deal? Do you do that?
Well, I guess my recommendation is, we should consider installing at least, you know, one additional crosswalk because of the significant span, and my recommendation would be at that location, but keep in mind, as I stated in the memo, three park stalls would have to be removed in order to install the crosswalk safely. So there's a bit of compromise there.
Okay. Go ahead there, Deputy.
Would, would, do you think Brown Street may be a, a better place to put one if we didn't do Lovett?
Uh, well, again, I, I received the, the message from, from Councillor Lesser about Brown Street after, after I considered the Lovett Street location, so if you would allow me to maybe have another look, I don't want to delay this too much, but as I stated in the memo, because of the time of year, we may have to defer the installation of the crosswalk till the spring anyway.
I think that would be best. I, I know three spots plus the trees probably isn't all that popular with most of us around, so maybe if we could, at least from my point of view, I think, see some heads nodding, so maybe Brown's a good thing to look into, if we could.
Sure.
You're still, you're still, it's just a block or two, right? Like, because a lot of people go to the restaurant, I know that's what happens, they go and they cut down, they go across, but, but it's just a block.
Even if, even if you have a, a crosswalk at every block, most, most people aren't going to walk to the nearest crosswalk to cross the street.
Okay. All right. Go ahead there, Councillor.
Yeah, the concern around Brown Street is, obviously, in, being there most days, there's parking across the street, and then a law firm and the school board office across the street, so the, the two places that you could legally cross would be at the ferry terminal or at Rutter's, in that section. So obviously, most people are, are forced to go across the street with that one.
Yeah.
And it is a section that I think I'm guilty of as well as traveling a little faster, because there is no sidewalk there, and you tend to speed up a bit, and you're right with, with the traffic, it's intermittent, but the traffic is quite busy at the same time that both the law firm and the, the regional center is getting out, so I think the two kind of, the two kind of complement each other to make it a little bit more of dangers, dangerous of a situation. So I, I think it would be good if we could take another look at it, and thinking that it probably won't have anything that we can do until the spring anyway. I would like to see, at least take another look at that spot. But while I'm on crosswalks, if I may, Your Worship, the, there was another couple spots that, and I know it's, it's been brought up, but Brunswick Street Extension on Hibernia, there's a bus stop on that corner, and I know in the report, it's, it mentions about reviewing the traffic flow, and I'm just wondering if it's possible that when they do that, they could review their traffic flow at times that the buses are there? The concern in that spot is not typical pedestrians, but it's, students are on a corner there, which is not a great spot, and the students from the north, or sorry, the south on Brunswick Street crossing over, there is no legal way to cross that. The other problem with those streets with Hibernia and Prospect, any of those streets going up, for anybody who's dropped kids off at, at Meadowfields, the sun in the morning is shining right down on there as well, so I, I think, like, a crosswalk is, is one thing. A stop sign forces people to stop, when I know they don't necessarily stop right away, like, it takes a little while for them to get used to, but the inquiry I had from, from a resident in that area, and I've, I've noticed it myself, driving by there, is, I think the, the concern would be more of having like a four-way stop versus a crosswalk, or a four-way stop with crosswalks. And since I'm on the crosswalk train here, I'm going to keep going. The, there's another issue that was brought to my attention by a resident on Harrington Avenue, and I just, I'm just trying to get some clarification on it, I don't know if anybody has the answer, but Harrington Avenue that comes off of Brunswick Street Extension, there's a sidewalk on Brunswick Street Extension, and then the top of Hibernia Avenue, there's crosswalks in the new, all the new subdivision, but the section between those, there's no, there's no crosswalks, or sorry, sidewalks to get from Brunswick Street Extension to the top, and it may be that it's a private developer put the sidewalks in as they were building, I'm not sure of the answer, but I wanted to at least look into that, because I, I think it is a busy spot for a lot of people walking, and it, to me, it would seem like a good place to, for us to look at a cross, sidewalk, sorry.
Do you want to get this, or do you want me to?
I'll take the sidewalk one.
Yeah.
Just in terms of how it came to be that way, Chad can speak to it, I guess, in terms of, of future, but just, it's, it's a, it's a relevant point, because it, and a good thing to, to bring, I guess, at this point, because it, it is a result of, of changes in our subdivision bylaw. So when the original road, Harrington, was developed, it was before the subdivision bylaw required the developer to put in all of the street infrastructure, including the storm sewer, sidewalks, curb gutter, the whole thing, so that's what you got, and, and you will remember that it wasn't so long ago that on Brunswick Street Extension, it was the same, it was the same thing, it was open ditch, and there was no sidewalk, and Counsel, a few years ago, allocated the capital budget to, to fix that. So our subdivision bylaw today, and for a number of years, has required the developer to put in sidewalk, curb, gutter, all the sewer, water, all that, and then turn it over to the town. And so at the point up the hill where you sort of see the sidewalk and curb and gutter start, that's when the bylaw came into place. Okay? So the, the section further downhill was not done by the developer, he sold the lots, they built their houses, but they didn't have the street infrastructure, so to put it in now, and this is the dilemma that you get in with, to when you look at the subdivision bylaw, when somebody is, is expanding the town's streets and selling lots and people are building homes, they're taking the money from the sale, the people are coming in building the homes, but if, if they don't put in the street infrastructure and it comes in later, it's paid for by all the taxpayers, as opposed to the developer, and so I think what we've done is, is consistent with most municipalities across the province by requiring the developer to do all of that. The only thing the developer doesn't have to do is put the asphalt on, the town does that, after it's turned over to us, the street. We, I've talked to Natalie and Reese recently about having a look at our subdivision bylaw, it was on Morse Lloyd's list of things to do, and what I would say, sitting back and looking at it, at the amount of development in the town, in a residential perspective and subdivision development, is that that bylaw has choked the life out of, out of subdivision development in this town. And it's, it's, we've swung the pendulum a little too far, that we're not seeing roads being put in and, and parts of town that could be opened up for development, we're not seeing it happen. Now, whether or not, if we swung the pendulum back a bit, at what point does development start to occur? You know, there, there are lots of factors, and I don't know the answer, that's something I want our planning, our planner to look into and to provide advice to us. So what, what you have, if you swing the pendulum back, is you have situations like Harrington, where houses are developed, people move in, and then they develop expectations around, oh gee, why doesn't my street have all the same things as the next street over? And it comes to the general tax base to pay for that. That's not, that's not a bad thing, the general tax base pays for a lot of things, but it's just sort of how that situation evolved, and, and what, you know, a, a good opening to say that we're looking at that, but as far as what happens in the future with Harrington and whether or not a sidewalk is in our, is in our plans, I'll stop talking, and maybe Chad can pick it up.
Yeah, so I, I, I looked at your, your email earlier in the week, and had a look at Harrington, and I think there is sufficient right-of-way width there to install a sidewalk, however, if you want it done properly with a curb and storm drainage and, and a sidewalk that meets today's standards, it would be a significant cost. Now, I did an estimate in my head, I don't know if you want me to, so probably between 150 and 200,000. That'll get you from Brunswick Street to the upper part of Harrington Avenue. I know it sounds significant, but it's, the work is more complicated than you think. It's not a matter of just putting concrete sidewalk down.
Go ahead there, Counselor.
Hey.
Huh? No?
Sorry to be a pain. This seems to be coming a long run of things. But I had a citizen reach out to me and he lives on Huntington Street. And what he wrote was, he's been living at the address for 27 years and he's concerned about the lack of sidewalk there to the lower end of the street just before Brunswick. And what he wrote was, "The time has come for the sidewalk to be completed. A few new families with young children have recently moved to the part of the street. They have to walk on the dirt on the side of the street or in a lot of cases, on the street itself." And he was wondering if we could look into it. And so I just wanted to put that on your radar at least. And I have no idea if that's even on any of the assessments or not, but I wanted to throw that out there for you.
Yeah, Huntington Street's a bit of an oddity. So on the Pleasant Street end, you have sidewalk on the south side of the street. But down on the Brunswick Street end, it's on the north side. Don't know why that is. That occurred before my time here, but it's sort of been on our radar for years. Just a matter of doing an estimate and putting it in the budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
Figure who's, okay, go ahead.
With all the interesting discussion going on, I'm not gonna add to it, but I'm gonna suggest to, to us as a whole council that we just add this to next year's infrastructure budget. As, as, at least we have choices then because you'll be making recommendations and we'll have choices to make.
So typically, on, what, what council does on sidewalks is allocate a new sidewalk construction budget within the capital planning process. And Chad usually comes forward with a list based on, you know, assessment of a number of factors, including public concern. But also, there may be places where, where safety is an issue, where a sidewalk needs to be, needs to be built because people are walking there. And Haley wrote is a good example of that. So that's the way the process normally works is, is rather than just presenting you a laundry list of places where there aren't sidewalks or could be sidewalks, we, we put together a priority list and as we go down the list, as far as the budget will go, and Chad can speak to, and I think it's important, if you hear things from the public about areas they're concerned about, that, that feeds into the process, but it's not the only factor. And what we hope is that, is that by allocating an adequate budget, that Chad will be able to, Chad and Mark will be able to address a number of these each year. And you'll be able to tell people, "We heard you." And it, maybe it's not this year, but it's, it's on the list and we'll hit it next year as long as we allocate the budget.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Well, just quickly, following up on a point raised by Counselor Cleveland. I just wondered if there's any consideration given to things such as the need in that particular area, like a new, a small fam, a family with small children move in. But there's an area, for example, Marsh Avenue, where there's a Yakro home nearby and there's no sidewalks there. And they've, they've experienced difficulty. That, that street very often gets used as a throughway. People taking shortcuts to get off stars. So I'm just wondering if, when you're considering where, where the priority for sidewalks are, are those things taken into consideration as well?
Yes. Again, Marsh Avenue's sort of been on, on our list, not on the front of the list, but on the back of the list for several years as well. Again, it just comes down to a matter of budget. That would be considered a capital expenditure. But the priority, I guess, over the last several years have been upgrading or replacing existing sidewalks that have become a bit of a liability. Some of the older asphalt sidewalks that don't drain too well anymore or don't meet the minimum width as per today's standards. So, but yes, Marsh has been on the list. But again, that's quite a span, considerable cost. I think I did an estimate 10 years ago, actually. So I can certainly update that and bring a list.
Okay, thank you.
So you may have said this already, Jeff. But when we start building and expanding, not that we have much room left to go, can we not just say you have to have a sidewalk put in? Because it's, it's, it's sort of like, you move into a place with no sidewalk, no playground, none of these amenities. And when you move in, you want all this to, to appear. And we just can't make it happen. There's not enough money to make it happen, if, if we're being honest, right? So, so how do we, how do we figure that out in the, in the planning so that you just, you just can't do that anymore? We gotta have a sidewalk or something.
So part of the, I'm sure part of the rationale in the subdivision bylaw of today that, that has been in place for, for quite a while is that, you know, if, if you're expanding the street network and you're building that for a reason, you're gonna, you're gonna sell lots and people are gonna build homes, there's gonna be expectation come with that. In the meantime, there may be places where we have infrastructure adjacent to vacant land that could be infilled. And so in the, in the public interest, you want the infrastructure to be used to its maximum capacity before, before you expand it because it becomes less efficient. But if it's in a private developer's interest to expand your infrastructure, to sell land that they own in small buildable lots, then, then they put in the infrastructure. That's, I'm sure, the rationale so that the person who they, you know, moves into a brand-new home, you know, proud of it, they're happy, and they have a sidewalk. And, and, you know, all of the, all of the amenities that, that they will expect in the street.
And they've sort of paid for it.
And they paid a portion of it.
It's almost like an area rate.
Yeah. And so that's another tool that we have. I'm glad you brought that up. We do have a, a local improvement bylaw that has been updated not too long ago. And that bylaw allows residents of a street or a section of street who lack an amenity such as a sidewalk to petition the town to, to build that sidewalk. So let's imagine Harrington for a second, just because we were talking about it today, or we can talk about Marsh Avenue. The way it would work is that a certain percentage of the property owners and a certain percentage, and I think it's like 50, 60 percent, of the, of the footed, the defrontage, the total frontage that would be impacted by that new amenity, whether it's water, sewer, sidewalk, whatever, if, if they meet the thresholds in the petition that are required to, to bring a petition to council, they bring the petition. Now, council still has the ability to say, notwithstanding you've met the thresholds, we're not gonna do that. Or you can say, yes, we are gonna do it. And the great thing about that bylaw, from a general taxpayer perspective, is that it requires a percentage of the cost of that infrastructure to be levied against those properties on that street as an area rate over, over like 10 years. So let's say you wanted a hundred and fifty thousand dollar sidewalk. And let's imagine that half the price is gonna be picked up by the town and half by the petitioners. That's seventy-five thousand. And imagine there's probably, let's say, 15 homes there. That's, what are we, five thousand dollars a home, spread over 10 years, it's five hundred dollars a year. Or, you know, forty bucks a month, and you've got your sidewalk.
I love that.
You know, that, so we have, we have that tool. It has been used seldomly, seldomly in the town. I know Morris Lloyd was trying to organize a group of, group of property owners in an area of town to, to use that bylaw just a couple of years ago, but they didn't get the numbers, didn't get the, the buy-in. It was used on Jarvis Road before Jarvis Road was developed. There wouldn't, there wouldn't have been a road there had, had the property owners not petitioned the town to put services in there. So it has been used and, and used effectively. So, you know, whether it's Marsh or, you know, Marsh, as Chad has said, it's been on the list for 10 years. If the folks on that road are, you know, have had enough and they, and they're interested enough to pay on their taxes, you know, a significant portion of the cost, it certainly puts a compelling case forward to council that you can get infrastructure put in at a fraction of the full cost.
Sort of like housing.
Sorry?
Sort of like housing.
Yes, sort of like that.
Yep. Okay. All right, that's, that's helpful. That's helpful. Because there, you know what? Everybody wants a sidewalk. Let's, let's just call it for what it is. And, and I, I fully understand that. You live within town limits. You know, you, you want sidewalks, but we just can't, we just can't. And you can't, you just can't move in somewhere. We've had requests for playgrounds and, and everything. When you move in, there's no playground. We can't just throw one in, right? It's not, it's not that simple. Okay, so what else have we got for, for Chad? Go ahead.
The, the only thing I would, I would like to offer, as long as Chad is, is standing here, is, is that, you know, the Traffic Authority work that he does around crosswalks, it, he does, does it objectively and methodically, follows the standards. And, and, and he does put a lot of, I know, thought and consideration into it. So it's, it's a, it takes some of his time. And so some of these, some of these requests, and there's a few of them on the board, you know, they're gonna take a little bit of time because that's in addition to our normal, normal operations. And, and so I just ask for your, for your patience as, as Chad works through these requests. And I have full confidence in, in him and, and I value his, the effort that he does put into that work.
We do too, Chad. And, and there's a difference between, I mean, we can't, well, we can, but we shouldn't. Every time one person wants a crosswalk or wants a playground, one, one person, it's, you know, we, we just can't, we just can't. But at least it's on the table. Okay? So then we've got the crosswalks on, crosswalk on Parade Street near the elementary school. That's the next one.
I forgot about that one. So as I indicated in my memo, we, we took a look at sort of the geometry of the street and the, the crest of the hill near Seminary. And so to, to put an additional crosswalk on Parade Street and make it safe, we would have to set it back approximately, I gotta read my notes here, I think 110 meters from the crest of the hill. And if we were to do that, that would put the new crosswalk within 70 meters proximity of the existing crosswalk near School Street. So I have gone and witnessed both pedestrian and vehicle activity over numerous days and numerous times of the day. And what I'm seeing is the existing RA5 crosswalk with the flashing beacons near School Street is used quite a bit, especially during times of school dismissal and arrival. A lot of parents who are walking, what appears to, they appear to be walking from the central and south, south end areas, use the crosswalk. So I just don't know if it would be practical to put in an additional crosswalk to, and again, I don't wanna
No, I
sound insensitive, but
I'm with you.
to appease a cer- a certain group or a certain time of day. So that's my recommendation, I guess, is to not put in an additional crosswalk. And because if we wanna do this, again, safely, several, several park stalls would have to be removed. Not only park stalls, stopping prohibitions. You wouldn't allow to, we wouldn't allow people to stop there. And, and it would, I would have to recommend another RA5 crosswalk with flashing beacons. So that has some budgetary implications as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
Chad, the, get away from the sidewalks, but still parking issues. The situation with the no parking, removing the no parking in front of the Yarmouth Elementary School. I know you, you're looking at it.
Yeah.
And you had indicated that there still needed to be some measurements taken there to see whether the street was wide enough. What is the timeline on that looking like?
Well, we've taken the measurements. That was, that was the, that was the quick thing. It's just to compare the measurements to what the guidelines state in the Traffic Association manual. At first glance, it looks like if we remove those no parking stalls and allow parents to, to park on the, on the north side of Parade Street and continue to, to leave the parking stalls on the south side, we may not have the, the footprint or the right-of-way width to do so. So the decision would have to be made, remove the park stalls, the existing park stalls on the south side of the street to accommodate parking or stopping on the north side.
Would we lose park, parking spaces in that process?
We would because you've got, you, we would have to set back the, the new park stalls away from the, the bus turning lane and from the existing crosswalk. So I haven't figured that out yet, but what I can do is figure out sort of the net loss of, of park stalls.
Yeah. And then we can take it to them and, and see what their wish is. Okay, thank you.
So I have, I just have a question on this one. Is, is it, is it because people don't wanna walk to that School Street crosswalk? Is that what it is? Go, go ahead. Cause you, you know better than I do.
I think it's more that they're picking up and dropping off of students in front of the school because the bus, the bus is inside on the property. The parking in, on the property, there's, is very limited. So people are dropping off and picking up their children right in front of the school rather than having them cross, or like park on the other side. And then there is, well, there's a crosswalk, but it's down a ways. And so it's just to have the children come out, not have to cross the street at all and be able to pick them up right there. So I think they would probably be for that more and maybe willing to give up some of the ones across, but I can't, can't speak for them, but.
That's what I observed. So when I was, when I was there monitoring the activity of the existing crosswalk during school departure, I did see a lot of parents parking on the south side of the street, cross the street and then get their children and, and come back. But I would just, I, I will warn you, if we, if we, we don't currently know what the, what the use of the old central school will be. So if you end up taking park stalls in the south end, the south side of the street and then some development occurs on, at Central School, then, then we're being asked to put it back, so.
Good. Anything else for Chad?
I just wanted to speak to the refurbishing of the benches in Heritage Park. I use that park a lot, walk through there a lot, and those park benches were in very hard shape. They were really quite disgraceful. So I was really pleased to see the work that was done. And I thought that using the lumber and the timber that came out of the cotton mill was a perfect match for that project because the cotton mill sits right next to the park, right? So it was just, it's a really awesome, awesome thing. And I think it also, it's just kind of fitting that the name of the park is Heritage Park. And now we have another piece of our heritage sitting in that park, which is part of the old cotton mill now, you know, encompassed in the, in the benches. So I thought it was just a really, a really nice idea. Somebody was very, somebody was very creative and I really think it was awesome.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Should I sanitize this?
Okay, we've got the Planning Department report next. And we've got Natalie and we've got our new planner. Welcome, Reese. I haven't met you yet. I feel guilty. I haven't been upstairs, but.
I was gonna formally introduce.
Yes, you go right ahead. That'd be wonderful.
Sorry that we were late. We thought it was online. So I'd like to introduce Reese Bernal as the town planner. He started last Monday and he's gotten right into the thick of things already. In future, if there are specific planning reports, we'll just add it below the Planning and Development as a separate section so that Reese can present and participate with you on that. If there are any questions on the planning report that you see today, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Any questions on the planning piece, folks? Good stuff. That was easy. Thank you, both. Asset management and inf- Asset Management and Infrastructure. Mark Brophy.
So the list is getting a bit shorter, that means we're getting work done, I guess.
Woo!
And realistically, by Christmas, it's gonna get shorter again, so. Any questions in any of the projects? I'm sure asphalt question is coming up.
I did.
Tomorrow, the spreader's supposed to be here and start.
Oh, wonderful, for Main Street, that's great. I'm supposed to have some kind of a report soon from NSFM on, uh, on roads as well that will hopefully give towns a fair shake. Go ahead, Councillor Leser.
So, uh, tomorrow's Thursday, so the asphalt, like, what's the, what's the timeline to get asphalt for that?
It's weather dependent, uh, and we have some rain coming in Thursday, Friday, Monday. But, uh, on the base, base course, you can get away with the amount of rain on the gravels, but once your first lift is down, it needs to be dry, you don't want water between and between. So, uh, if we had three days, we'd be done. We're starting tomorrow. The size streets is where the work is, the straight is easy, but you have four size streets you gotta tie in, so that's where the work is.
I'll be so glad when that's done. Had some questions on how the, uh, actually, I think it was, um, Tina with the Vanguard was just asking about, is there enough space? Is it, it's, it's basically experts doing this. It's, it's not a racetrack, Main Street isn't a racetrack, and it's, it's all designed by, uh, experts, engineers, and
There is a simple way to explain it. It's not about math and geometry. It's, it's the width of a parking lane.
Yeah.
So when you walk to the end of the sidewalk, and if you don't have a, a bump boat, and there's a big truck parked there, a car, you can't see or you're
Yeah.
in one of these.
Yeah.
But with the bump boat, you're to the edge, the end of where the, the parking lane is, and you can see. So all you are doing is, when you make a turn, you're not turning into the cars, you're avoiding them, so the bumps, is that fair?
Yeah, and we're not losing parking. Two, okay. It's all right, you know what, we got lots of. The problem here is everybody wants to park ten feet from where they're going, right? That's just not feasible because it's getting busy. Woo, that's good news. Any questions for the engineer? Um, I'm, I'm just gonna say this while I'm thinking of it. Um, I called the Deputy Minister because we had something for the third planned. And it's now moved to that second date, Jeff, whatever that was, the tenth or eleventh of December. What was it? The eleventh of December. Um, so they're just monitoring everything, that date, because it's the couple of weeks out. They will monitor that, and I did tell them that we had the, the PowerPoint, and we wanted to talk to them about the terminal. Um, this is T I R, Mark. So if all else fails, then we can certainly hop on a call, they're glad to do that. Yeah, so that'll be the eleventh. Okay, good, is there's no questions? Yes, thank you, it's hard to keep up.
Good work. Thanks.
Finance. Jerry, tell us we got some money.
I guess what I can tell you is we're following along with our plan pretty well so far.
Okay.
I guess, um, should, I'll answer the questions because I, I do have the financial report sent out. New members may not be familiar or that familiar with, with this way this report works, and I'm looking at a couple of options to change it a bit, but, uh, the big change, the big thing about this report is we record our capital in our operating budget until the end of the year. That's how we track it and keep, uh, keep an eye on where things are overall. Uh, so if you look at the town's statement to the end of October, all the capital falls under the Fiscal Services, uh, budget line, which is the very bottom line. And that's why you'll see that we've got a budget of three million, and we've spent almost seven million in that one line, and that is the capital portion. So when I've looked at what we spent for capital, we've spent, uh, five point eight million so far this year on capital with our, our budget out of operations of about two million. So we're about three point eight million over that one budget line. So when you remove the capital, which is what happens, when we hit our year end and work with our auditors, we move all the capital to the capital fund. You end up with, uh, what, probably three, three thousand, three to four thousand, three to four hundred thousand, a little better than planned right now. And when I've gone through the statements, most of it is probably timing on maintenance. Um, we're, we're a little bit ahead on taxes, which is the top line. Uh, the way we budget taxes, we budget based on our assessments that we get through PVSC, but we always allow for appeals to come through. So at this point, uh, there are some appeals outstanding still, so I anticipate there will be some appeals and some taxes that'll be lowered. Uh, but I think we have the allowance built in there, so we should be okay as well.
But COVID, the, the taxes are coming in regardless of COVID, right?
Taxes are being paid, but people are appealing their assessments.
Yep.
Um, so like I said, we, we base on assessments that we get in January, but, uh, through experience, practicality, we realize people appeal their assessments. Typically, uh, they are lowered, um, and so we allow for that. So right now, we just haven't seen the number of appeals come through that we expected to this point. The water utility is a similar thing. Their statement, the, the, it's actually called capital out of revenue with the U A R B's, uh, rules. Uh, so you'll see that we've spent close to a little over a hundred thousand dollars more than planned. Uh, that money as well would be, uh, used out of the capital fund, the water utility capital fund. So when you eliminate that hundred thousand dollar difference, we're, you know, within, uh, thirty, forty thousand dollars of the plan on the water utility. So I think we're following plan pretty well to this point. Uh, it's a bit early to say what March would look like, we're still got five months to report. But, uh, it's good so far. Two other things I'd like to just mention. Um, one's, I think Lindsay passed out, uh, two, I guess, kind of initiatives that we've been working on. One is the electronic fund transfer, so authorization forms. So you've probably got forms on your desk similar to this. So I ask that you fill those out if you would. What this is going to replace are checks. So we're starting with staff and council. Uh, so when you get reimbursed for expenses or you get different allowances, different payments, instead of them going through the accounts payable process and having a check cut and then signed, mailed. With this form, we will be set up to actually get electronic fund transfers. So your payments or your expense claims, any invoices, those types of things, would go through the exact same process. It's just when Janet, uh, does accounts payable, and instead of hitting a button to say, "Print a check", she'll hit a button that says, "Create a file". That file will go to the bank, and within forty-eight hours, the money will be deposited directly to your account. So just trying to reduce the number of payments that we make or checks that we do. There's been, um, some call for it from our suppliers and vendors. Uh, so, uh, in, I guess, being a little bit of caution on our part, making sure that it works with staff and council a couple of runs before we just go and promote it with all of our vendors. Uh, so, and, and I expect that in the, in the, early in the new year, we'll do that with Mike's help. The third thing I wanted, or the other thing I wanted to mention that we've been working on is a, a different parking, um, program, parking method. It's called, uh, it's software called Hot Spot Parking. So what Hot Spot Parking will allow us to do is, uh, basically, it's an online parking pass system. So people would have been basically able to download an app or go, uh, go onto our website, and purchase parking passes through that venue instead of coming to Town Hall. It's signed through, uh, a license plate number, so our parking enforcement officer would basically end up with a handheld device and basically, um, take pictures of parking license plates, or license plates. It's real time, live when it's done. And he basically, for time violations, it takes a digital, digital stamp, time stamp of that vehicle with a GPS location. So we wouldn't be marking tires, he'd be taking pictures of license plates. Couple hours later, you go back, and it would say if that car is still there in the same spot. And if it is, he'd basically be able to print a ticket right off of his handheld. Um, so there wouldn't be the issue that we have now, people come up and say, "No, I moved my tire, look, the truck lines moved four inches." It's digitally stamped. If you've not moved from that parking spot, you'll be issued a ticket.
So you have to, you have to pay to be in the parking lots though, right?
In the parking lot, you can still, you know, you buy your passes, they're twenty dollars a month.
Right on.
And you can do that online as well. So again, he would just go through, and when he, uh, scans that license plate, it would just come up paid, so he can move on to the next one.
I got it for the city.
Yeah.
So you just punch in your
So this is, this is something we've just, uh, started. I've just signed a, an agreement with Hot Spot Parking. Um, our tentative go-live date wouldn't be until the end of February, first of March. So because of the holidays, we wanted to give ourselves lots of time to make sure we have time to implement it, get the equipment that needs to be done, get the software updated and that kinda stuff. So, uh, again, once we get a little closer to go-live, um, again, with Mike's help, there's lots of, um, marketing and lots of ads signage that we can do, so let people know.
Good. Go ahead there, Jim. Where's Steve, Deputy?
Um, when this goes online for the Hot Spot Parking, will, will there still be an option to come to Town Hall to pay it, or it'll be a hundred percent?
Oh yeah, no, for sure. People can still come to Town Hall and buy their passes, um, that's the option still there. Uh, the one thing that I'm unsure about at this point still is whether, right now, we sell day passes at a couple of drugstores, a couple of downtown locations. I don't know if that would still be an option or not, but they certainly come to Town Hall.
And, uh, just to speak into the water utility, you said there's about a hundred thousand dollars more there in debt. Would that be because of the, uh, bulk water station, or?
No, uh, well, the, the capital is certainly the bulk water station, yes.
Yep, perfect. Actually, Councillor Hood had took me for a tour around, and when you turn on your tap and actually get water, it's hard to believe how many things go through before you actually get a glass of water. So it's quite extensive and whatnot, and I'm happy to be learning more about it, so, thank you.
Good. Go ahead there, Councillor.
Um, Jerry, going back to, to this item.
Yeah.
Even, even for the old councils, we have, we fill that out, eh?
Yes, please, yes, please.
And, uh, what about, um, we're getting started with this, but what about the checks that the, the mayor and the deputy mayor sign in the, and ones I signed for a couple of, uh, the waterfront?
Yep.
Does that gonna eventually go to this, uh, system too, or will they always?
Yeah, we're starting right now with the town's checks, which is the bulk of them. Um, and that's where, uh, people here and, and staff get reimbursed typically.
Yeah.
And so like I say, we've had, we've made a couple of payments to vendors that have really kind of, insisted that we not pay with checks. So I did, we did pay two vendors so far with, with this process, but, uh, we just recently got staff to sign up and asking council to sign up now. So over the next month, we'll, as we do check runs, we'll do checks, and hopefully the checks will just decrease in our E F T report, we just get larger and larger.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Good, any more questions for Jerry? Awesome, thank you. Econom, uh, Yarmouth Recreation, so there's a report there. Frank's, I don't see Frank, but there is a report, and we have a meeting next week. Go ahead, Jeff.
Worship, I just wanted to mention Frank's and his regrets.
Thank you. Go ahead there, Deputy.
I have been down to the South End Playground a few times in the, uh, and where I work at the high school. The kids are quite happy of the backboards and, and fixing up down there, so I'm glad to see the progress that's going down, and, uh, they're excited for the possibility that the lights could be fixed up here pretty soon as well. So Frank and, uh, others did a great job down there.
On, on Kemp Street, says our guy out back, Kemp, that's Kemp. Go ahead there.
Actually, speaking of lights, it's just something that occurred to me, and, and a couple of people have commented on it. And as I drive by, I've been doing a lot of late night driving, unfortunately, um, and going by the skate park. And the lights are wonderful there, but they are on awfully late, uh, on a, on a regular, like a Monday to Friday. I'm not sure what time they turn off, but it's, it's fairly late. Yeah, in summer, that makes sense, but
I thought it was eleven in the sun, I thought it was like eleven in the sun.
Chad, Chad may be able to enlighten us on that.
Yeah, enlightened, so I see what you did there. That's why you get the big money.
Um, actually, I can't enlighten you on that. I don't, I don't, I, typically, they're, they're set to go, uh, off an hour after dusk or two hours after dusk, but I'd have to confirm that with Todd. I can't, can't recall right off the top of my head, but
They're still like lit late.
Yes. So maybe if So these are the actual skate park lights, okay. Yeah, we'll check, yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Good, anybody else? All right, um, yes.
I'm sorry, didn't mention, it's okay.
Do you know what that is?
From Frank's report, that the Christmas tree lighting was taking place tomorrow night. That's in his report, right? So did you, were you
Friday night?
Friday night, sorry, yeah, today's Wednesday.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, so Friday night, it's virtual, but for folks who wanna watch it, um, they'll be able to do that. So that will be, I seen them out there trimming the tree today, actually, putting the lights on.
Yeah, actually, Mike and I did a video just to introduce it for, for Friday night, so that's all virtual. I hope everybody, yeah, hops online. So, so Heather, this has been a s- eight years, actually, even before me. I can't see your light. If the, sometimes the light is just not, so when he closes those, I can see. So if you're ever beeping and I don't see you, and Gil's only in my peripheral here, so just wave if I miss you. Okay, Economic Development, so it's Natalie.
If there are any questions on my report, I'd be happy to, to provide any answers, and I have some updates from the report.
Go ahead, uh, Councillor Jim.
You have a new facade committee.
Yes, we do.
Congratulations. You had, uh, lots of good support from the previous, how many years?
Six years.
Six years. Can I ask who the chairperson is?
Sure, so last night, we had a meeting, and Belle Hatfield has accepted the position of chair, and, um, David Gorman is vice chair, Det McMillan is treasurer, and Danielle Sarette is the secretary. And the other three, Julie Mood, Heidi Kenny, and Jane Moore are directors at large.
And this is for both the, the first, the facade program and the new mural grant program.
Correct, correct.
Thank you very much.
Good, okay, so Councillor Leser?
I'm just wondering if there's been much interest in the win this space, uh, contest. I know it's been advertised quite well, and I'm just wondering if people are coming forth with business ideas. I know it's a little tricky during COVID, but, um, I'm wondering if there's any, if there are, I, I probably can't speak to the applications, but if applications have come forward for that.
I'd be happy to speak to that. Um, so the, the application process closed. Uh, we have received eighteen applications. Um, the majority of them tend to be in the creative sector. I won't go into more detail than that, but I'll keep you guessing. What's interesting is one is outside of Nova Scotia, in the Atlantic Bubble. Uh, one is from around the H R M area, and there is significant representation in Digby, Waymouth. So they could choose, should they move forward to the winning position, they can choose any property that they would like to rent in the region, so they can stay within their own region, or they can move, as long as it's in the Western Renn region. So, um, the West, we're really happy that, that we received, uh, that amount of interest.
Good stuff. So you had some updates, Natalie?
Actually, those were the two.
Excellent. So, so the other thing is, um, I think everybody might not be aware of this, but, but through, uh, there's a program through MIT, uh, it's called The REAP. You can tell me what it is, I just can't. It's, it's entrepreneurship, and it's an amazing program, and Nova Scotia had the opportunity to take part, and we are taking part in that. Um, it's now going to be virtual, we were gonna get to be on the MIT campus and, and And we are taking part in that. Um, it's now going to be virtual. We were going to get to be on the MIT campus and, and I mean, everybody at the table knows they're top notch. You can't beat MIT. So we just um finished sending in the rest of the application tomorrow. We've already been accepted, but it's um, it's around what are our industries, you know, that type of thing. And we've got a, what I would call a rock star team. So everything from um Giltario up, up the line with the fisheries. Natalie and I are both sitting on that. Um, Angelik, uh Mary Thompson, I can't remember the rest, but it's just a really, really great team. So that starts actually in January and we're, we're good to go. And it will help us develop economically in the region, which is tremendously important, especially given COVID. So even though we can't go in person, it's still, still hugely valuable. Go ahead there councillor Heather. Councillor Hatfield?
The mural ca- uh mural fa- um program, have we had any response to that or interest, expressions of interest in that?
So we, the, the facade society hasn't rolled it up formally, but, but once the, previously in the summer, when we were developing the program, I had uh three local businesses that inquired and I sent them the preliminary application. Uh, so they tend to be so far business owners that are interested to work with an artist to develop that. So just maybe a quick update. So at the last night's board meeting, they finalized the schedule of the uh application process. So it'll be over six stages from the time that um the announcement is that applications are, can be accepted to the time that it's completed. So um, application closures would be in the January timeframe, but they're going to be launching a whole communications plan. Uh, that will be in uh December. I would say probably the second week of December is their target. Um, so yeah, then we'll be able to uh, to, to get some noise around it. And then we'll do some direct uh emailing to the businesses within the central business district uh so that they're not only getting it direct, but they can get it from other uh venues. So, yeah.
And the, the murals themselves, Natalie, will they be, um, I know they have to be approved by the, by the facade committee so that, but will they be theme based? Is there any thoughts on what the, how that process will go?
So the discussion around the table is that um they would like uh the applicant to not have any boxes around them. I think the main thing they're looking is for is originality, you know, respect of, you know, our destination. Um, and that it should be a sustainable, safe installation. That's very key on our buildings, that, you know, how it's installed, the methodology around and the tech, technical part of installation is really key. I did reach out to Halifax Downtown Business Association that did the, that does the nitty to gritty, no gritty to pretty program and got a lot of insight from them on lessons learned and their process. And so they're, they're there to support us if we need it through the process.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Natalie? Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, hospitality policy review.
Your worship, sorry.
Oh, sorry, CA.
Before you move away from staff reports, I'd, I'd like you to consider uh whether or not you want to um pass a couple of motions. So we went through a lot of things when, when Chad was, was at the podium. There were a lot of ideas thrown and, and some takeaways that I think he understood his work that the group wants done, but for the sake of tracking, if we could make motions. So I have a couple that I would propose if, if, if I have it right. And if I don't, just modify what I say and make it suit what you want. But I think I heard uh that you want to refer uh to the manager of uh, of Public Works, uh, the issues of sidewalks on Marsh Avenue, Harrington and Huntington. Sorry, that's sidewalks, right? Um, so if that were, if those were three, you want him to look at and consider in the sidewalk list, that a motion to refer those to him would be appropriate.
Your worship, I have to make that motion. That seems right.
Can we chuck Tucker Street in there?
Does the, does the mover agree?
Today, actually, regarding Tuck- uh Tucker Street, and I was out walking at the time and took a stroll down Tucker and it is a mess. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do that.
I would second that motion.
Take a look. I don't think there's one on either side. Okay, you moved it. Who seconded it?
I got it.
Oh, councillor Hatfield. Okay, questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, the, the second motion, I think I, I think I heard is terms of a work program. Um, there was a question about a four-way stop with crosswalks on Hibernia at Brunswick Street Extension. And there was a request to uh further investigate a crosswalk on Water Street at the intersection with Brown.
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Um, so, so I have a question on it. For who seconded that? Uh deputy? So, so the question was, was the four-way stop on Hibernia. So Chad, I'm just going to ask you this. So if it's not a four-way and it's just a cross, like if you can't do a four-way there, you can tell us what we can do? You know what I mean? I know that's just common sense, but if it's not a four-way and you think that we can just put a crosswalk in with a sign, then you would tell us that too, right?
Correct. Um, however, a four-way stop may solve two problems. May, uh, it may help with traffic calming as well. I don't know about you folks, but every time I drive down Hibernia Street, I find myself going about twenty kilometers over the speed limit.
Well, I walk the tracks and I have to stop short on Hibernia because something's going to run me down.
Yeah, I just, I guess, I just don't want to create an expectation that every time we install a crosswalk, we, we put in a four-way stop. I mean, we, we've done.
No, 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 no.
No, I just, I don't want to create that expectation with the public. Um, because we've, I've, uh, we did one at Grand in Brunswick already. That was my decision. Um, just based on what I, what I witnessed as far as kids trying to cross Grand uh in Brunswick, so.
Yeah, the whole, the whole deal is, and Jeff said, I mean, we trust you. We, we trust that you know what's best. All we can do is say this is a concern and if it's, if it works. I guess, I guess what I was saying is we're asking, if you can look at the four-way, but if it's not the four-way and it's something else that works, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
The recommendation may be that we can install a crosswalk without making the intersection a four-way stop.
Exactly. But either way, it doesn't, whatever, whatever works.
Yep.
That was the question. Fair enough. Okay. So moved and seconded. Any more discussion on that one? Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary?
Yes.
Motion carried. Anything else there, Jeffrey Guxu? Good stuff. Thank you for keeping us on track. We all know when we give you credit for something, Lindsay's behind it. Just saying. Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. Hospitality policy. So we're, we, this is one of our review items? That's, so that's all we're going to do is just, go ahead.
So your worship, this is, this one is actually a little exceptional, these, these first two agenda items. So as, as we talked about uh at our last meeting, it is part of our practice now that we're going to review every policy and bylaw within your mandate as a council. But there's actually legislated, a legislative requirement uh around these two policies. Uh, these two policies were brought in um, were mandated by, by the provincial government um, a few years back as a result of some uh misbehavior by municipal officials when it comes to hospitality and expense, expenses. And so it was written right into the act that councils must, within three months of, of taking office or being sworn into office, they must review these policies and, and either amend them or reaffirm them. And so uh, we put this on your agenda today uh for your consideration and to begin the discussion. So the first one is the hospitality policy. Um, and, and these have been, sorry, these were circulated with the agenda. So I won't, I won't beat these to death uh in terms of going through them. Um, but if there are any questions or anybody would like some discussion uh from me on these, I'm happy to do so.
Okay. Everybody good? So the purchasing gifts, purchasing gifts for, you know, dignitaries and all that stuff, it has to go through you or council. So I assume I can just walk into your office and say, I need two. And you can okay that? Hmm? Good luck with that. No, I just wanted, it's that simple, right? Just, just in awareness, in awareness. Yeah. Okay. All right, I'm good. So we're just looking for a motion to approve this one as it is basically?
So to, to refer it to council, uh, recommend it to council. And so it will show up on the, all these motions, of course, show up on the council agenda uh later. But um, it's here because I thought this is a more, a slightly less formal environment. And if you want to get into a discussion, an explanation, certainly happy to do that. Um, and if there were any differences of opinion in terms of limits or process or whatever, we can have that discussion, fix up the policy and have it, have it back out to you in time for consideration for the December council meeting.
Okay. So I'm, I mean, I assume everybody's read it. So is there anything on here that anybody wanted to discuss? Good. So I'm looking for a motion to refer it to council.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Seconded by uh councillor MacLeod. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Expense reimbursement policy review. Go ahead.
This is exactly the same uh situation. Uh, this policy was brought in uh with the last council. The last amendment we made with it uh was to go from a receipts-based reimbursement for, for meals to a uh, a per diem based on uh the time, time commitment that you've traveled and the number of meals that weren't otherwise provided. And so um, those were the most recent changes. Um, but again, if there's any, any questions, comments, uh, we can, we can discuss those now. Other, if there are no amendments that come forth, this will appear on your, on your council agenda. If there are suggestions for changes, we will, we will still attempt to get that on the December council agenda.
Good. Anything there, folks? Councillor MacLeod?
Ear- earlier, Jerry was talking about signing authorities, or I was talking about signing authorities with Jerry. It's two, two point zero. That's still going to be, it's a valid uh inclusion?
Yeah, so, so the sign authorities on expense claims. So when you submit a, an expense claim, this isn't for the check. This is for the sign-off so that the, the expense claim has been reviewed. It meets the policy and it can go forward to, to finance, to uh, to process a check. So um, it's signing off on the, on the report or the requisition itself.
Yeah.
Yeah. So obviously, I don't sign off on my own, staff don't sign off on their own, and, and council doesn't sign off on their own. So there's, and there's two. So it's the responsibility of the two folks uh identified uh to uh, to review. And there's also a requirement in both of these policies that the, the um, the submissions uh be reviewed by the audit committee annually. And there's a requirement for a, a report to the minister annually. And for your information, uh, anybody who isn't aware, as your claims for expenses or hotel rooms booked, or anything that you incur for travel, uh, when that is processed, it immediately appears on our website, on a webpage, so that the general public has full transparency on uh, on what, what expenses you're incurring.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay, your worship. I just wanted Jeff to say that some of those things out loud because it's so important to be transparent. And uh, and I support that wholeheartedly. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to refer to council, please.
So.
Moved by councillor Cleveland, seconded by councillor Dares. Any more discussion? All questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, folks. Rhodes, go ahead.
Um, that's not my item, your worship, but um, I think so. I, I just, I just want to remind you because this is, uh, I think I'm correct in saying this, Lindsay, that uh, we don't, we don't record, record the name of the mover and the seconder anymore. So when it comes to making motions, if somebody just yells, I move, and somebody yells, I second, it's duly moved and seconded. Uh, we don't need to have the names because they're not going to be in the minutes.
So I don't have to start repeating, keep repeating their names?
Yeah.
Go ahead there, councillor Jim.
But I think that's, we have to start a discussion and that's why I make a motion or, and, and wait seconds, for example. I don't mind it disappearing afterwards, but I just want to start, that's the only way I know to start a discussion. Is that right?
That's the only way you're supposed to start it. You can't talk about something till it's on the floor.
That's right. That's how you get it started. But all, all I was pointing out is, is that uh, as the chair, you just have to hear those words, I move and I second, and then she declares that it's been duly moved and seconded. Um, without having to record the names, which she got so used to doing and so good at doing for the purposes of Lindsay uh keeping the minutes.
Yeah, I can figure out who moved and seconded, but I can't work this machinery. Mama's not technical. Okay. Um, so where were we? We're on the roads and somebody added roads. I don't know. It may have been me, but I think I already said, I, I, what was it? Oh. Go ahead there, councillor Weser.
Um, I, I guess the, the concern was a temporary concern when work was being done, your worship. Um, work was being done on the airport stretch and trying to figure out what part of that road the town owned. Um, at one point, I was talking to a gentleman and he was talking about turning lanes on Stars Road and not being enough. And I, I was confused by it. And I think, I think the airport stretch being a narrow stretch is, I think, looking back at it is what um, it was re, what they were talking about. Um, and I didn't know how much of the land we owned. And um, from that I learned, I guess we, we own up to around Honda. Um, so that section of, of highway, or road, it actually is, is quite wide, um, the town section. Um, but I, I think some people are concerned in the morning, coming to work even without construction, that it seems like a narrow stretch. Um, so I did take a drive down um, the airport stretch recent, recently, and they've done a lot of shouldering. Um, I don't know if there was any plan, if the municipality's looking at um, expanding like pavement on, on the sides as well, but it is wider of a section. Um, I think the concern was uh, turning lanes because there's a lot of businesses now. I know it's not, it's not our property, um, and not our road, but I think with a lot of uh industry going in there uh cars turning, it's slowing down traffic. So um, I, I'm not really sure what the question is.
Yeah, so slowing down traffic just means that, um, it's sort of like Stars Road used to be, right? There was only a couple of businesses on it. So you, I guess if traffic has to slow down, in my estimation, that's good because that means that there's development. That, that, but I, but again, the change that happens when people used to fly down the airport stretch and get to work in two minutes, and now it's five minutes, it, it concerns them partially. Secondly, that's just my thought. Um, Jeff, who owns the airport stretch?
So Derek, Derek had it right. Is that the um, and I believe.
We're, we're half of Honda, I think.
Chad will, will correct me if I'm wrong here, but from uh, in front of the Honda, the, the town boundary cuts diagonally across.
Yeah.
And somewhere about halfway in front of the uh, the Yarm- Yarmouth Honda, uh, it goes from being the municipality of Yarmouth to being the town of Yarmouth. And so we are responsible, uh, we own the street right of ways within the town. We're responsible for uh, the, the asphalt, sidewalk, curb gutter, all that street infrastructure. And, and including uh Chad as the traffic authority. Uh, once you cross that line into the municipality, it becomes a provincial responsibility.
So, so what he just said is if any work had to be done on our side of the line, our taxpayers would pay for it. If any work had to be done on the other side of the line, the province would pay for it. Which went to my earlier point today with um, hopefully uh, new, um, a new deal with the roads, with the province, where at least our arterials get looked at because it, it, that just makes no sense. It's so unfair. It's, it makes me sick.
Yeah, I guess prior to uh running in this election, I didn't realize, I didn't realize the funding formula for roads and didn't realize the town was on the hook for all pavement. And I know people love to talk about what needs to be paved, but um, the cost is, like, we can't afford to pave. but um, the cost is, like, we can't afford to pave everything, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, and it is a shame that the province and federal government aren't stepping in more uh, with some of these paving projects and that the municipality can get some of the roads done, or I guess all the roads done by the province. Um, the airport stretch, I don't think, I, I think, I guess the bigger reason to put it on the agenda or to talk about it, I think our section, to be, to be fair, I think our section of that road is wide, and, and it's looked after. Um, the concern, I believe, is on the other side, on the airport stretch, work may need to be done, but that's, that's not in our mandate. Um, and I, I think I just wanted to clear that up a little bit, that I don't think, I don't think that's something, well, I, I, it's not that I don't think, it's not the town's job to, to try to fix the municipality road, so.
Yeah, but, and, and so the reason I, I want to clarify with Jeff is so that if you get those calls, then you can direct them appropriately, right? Like, it's fair for you to be able to say, this, this is who looks after them, so you, so you know where that goes, so. Hopefully that was helpful. Hopefully we get some money. Okay? Uh, request for decision accessibility nomination committee. So the recommendation on this one is that council assess staff recommendation to establish a nomination committee to review the citizen applications received. And this is what, what I had mentioned earlier, we're going to go from seven to nine?
So the, the complete committee is nine, of which you've added one elected official.
Right on.
So that leaves seven citizen appointments?
Okay.
And we have eleven applications, so-
Right on.
The recommendation is that, that council, Your Worship council, forms a nomination committee to review those applications.
Okay, good. Do we have that committee set up already? Accessibility committee?
No. This is it, we're just starting.
Gosh, I thought we had that set up the last time. Go ahead there.
I think what, uh, what we did was we expanded it to additional councillors, so that myself and Derek, Constable Lester could both be on that committee. They both expressed an interest.
That's, okay.
I think you were on as a, um, it was showing the mayor as a, yeah, ex officio. So it's now two councillors.
Okay.
And um, so I'd make, I'd make a motion that we accept the recommendation, um, to form a nomination committee, and uh, I'm not sure Natalie has any suggestions, I'd be more than happy to serve in that committee.
Um, I have no suggestions, I'm leaving that up to council to determine who would like to participate in that.
Your Worship, uh, I don't mind making a recommendation on that. I think that the, the two council appointees to the committee, and yourself as mayor, perhaps the three of you could sit as a nominating committee, review the applications, and make a recommendation back.
Okay, so after we make this recommendation and these people accept, then we will have a committee. That's where I was missing it, I thought we were appointing you to a committee, but we weren't. We were just saying this is who would be on it from council. Okay, so do you want to make that, did you make that motion there, councillor? Doesn't matter. I don't care. Okay, moved and seconded. Um, any more discussion on this one? Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Thanks for that, Natalie. I get it, get it now. Hospitality expense request. Request for decision conditional transfer grants. Go ahead, C.
So grants is translation of the government speak, which is conditional transfers. So, Your Worship, there are a number of opportunities that exist uh, through the provincial, federal, and NGOs such as FCM for funding opportunities, and, and Your Worship, you and I talk about this frequently, um, that we just don't have the capacity to, to do the work, to find those pots of money, to make the proposals of the applications, and, and then um, hopefully achieve success. I am very confident that if we had a staff person dedicated to this work, that we would, we would achieve probably multiples of the person's salary in successful applications. And we've had some successful applications, some very significant successful applications that we've, we've put in, but again, we just don't have any who's focused on that. And uh, I think it would be a worthwhile pilot to run a three-year. And I say three-year for, for a specific reason. If we offer a position that we're looking for somebody with, with skills and uh, and ability, uh, you know, a, a good person, offering a one-year position is not, you're not going to get anybody leave where they are to come into that role. Two years is even a short time, but three years is within your council mandate, and I think it's long enough to be able to attract uh, somebody with, with a background that can be successful in this. And I fully expect, Your Worship, that if we approve this, that before we get to the three-year mark, it will be abundantly clear that this is well worth the, the, the expenditure because it pays itself back. So um, I finally am bringing this to the table for your consideration.
Go ahead councillor or deputy.
I was very happy when I read this, to see this on the agenda, I think it's very important, and as you said, if it could pay for itself in a very short period of time, and I think the three-year thing, what you just brought up, is also very good because you're probably not going to get quality people if you just offer a year at a time here and there, but as I've seen with this council, for the short time we've been together, we've already been sharing ideas about housing and whatnot, and then we could task that person with going at those things, and I, I think it just benefits it all. It's really forward-thinking, in my opinion, so, good job on that one.
Councillor McLeod?
I also support the recommendation. I was just thinking out loud, Jeff and fellow councillors, we had, I had a number of people questioning me about the hiring of the communication officer. And uh, I think we're overcoming the negativity in that respect. Well, when I read this earlier, Jeff, I had a dream, a little bit of a dream, and gee whiz, why, why couldn't we ask Modi to? What, what's your thoughts when I mention Modi and sharing this? What's your quick thoughts there?
My thought is consolidation, Jim.
Is what?
Is consolidation.
Yeah, that's, that's what came to mind, and, and so, I'm saying, I'm supporting it, but I also don't want to close the doors on just the job for this, for our town of Yarmouth. My gosh, we, that, that would benefit Modi too, if we had a person who would uh, do both. Anyway, I'll throw that out.
Councillor Haffield?
Um, yeah, I was really pleased when I read this as well. I think it's, like they say, it's a kind of a no-brainer. Uh, the position, I think, I believe, would certainly pay for itself, be somebody that would just be focused on, on um, looking at grants and what money was out there so that we could use it to better the, our community. So I would certainly be supporting uh, this motion.
Councillor Dares?
Yeah, I can speak to this really quickly, is that having applied for numerous grants on behalf of municipal units while I was at the Mariner Center, um, it's a, it's a time-consuming um, effort, and uh, I think you, if you do it every day, you develop a knack, and you also develop, it's, it, they, those kind of policies are changing daily, you have to keep abreast of what's, what's new. So I, I fully support this, I think it's a great idea. And to speak to, you know, what you said councillor McLeod, is that um, when you're applying for a grant for the Mariner Center, or for those kind of things, you're also applying on behalf of Modi, so. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the recommendation is the motion. Yeah, okay, so who seconded that, oh, there was, it was already on the floor, wasn't it? Okay, all right, moved and seconded, any more discussion? I'm not, I can't say it. I can't. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. I voted for it, I was, it's, it's, I've been saying this for years, right? It's a, it's a brilliant move. I'm just thinking, we pay to get the money, it comes off our bottom line. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Quite frankly. Go ahead councillor Lesser.
I think, uh, I think approving this motion and moving forward with this is actually going to help the agenda of us consolidating, um, and I think everyone at this table for sure, and I, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of municipality of Yarmouth or Argyle, but I'm hoping that everybody's on side, that we look at consolidation. And I think having somebody in place that can help us get grant money is, is a move in the right direction that might entice this move to happen as well. So I, I, I know voting in it, voting in favor of this seems like we're going at it alone somewhat, but I also think that it's important that they recognize that we're trying to better the greater community, not just the town of Yarmouth. So I think it's a move in the right direction to look at consolidation as well.
Thank you. Good?
Yeah.
Drinking fountains.
Your Worship, uh, this item was, uh, is information brought back by Frank Grant. Uh, this was referred at an earlier, uh, from, from last council to Frank. Frank sourced uh, an example of the type of drinking fountain, public drinking fountain that could be installed in, in some of our different parks and open spaces. And uh, he, he made a recommendation that, uh, you know, that could be located at Beacon Park, Frost Park, uh, or Skateboard Park. Uh, he provided a link to one supplier that you can kind of see, and there are several suppliers for these, uh, these things. I've seen them at trade shows, so you can get the ones that, uh, that you can fill a water bottle or the ones you can drink directly from, and you can even get some that have a, a bowl for animals, for, for pets. So, uh, Your Worship, um, a motion to refer this to budget uh, might be appropriate, and we can consider the financial side of it, uh, at that time.
Okay, councillor Cleveland?
First off, um, in going to, and, and it's too bad within the age of COVID that none of us will get that opportunity this time through, and hopefully in the future, but going to these trade shows as part of the, the NSFM or the, the Canadian municipalities, um, you see all this stuff, and, and I've been wanting this to happen for an awfully long time, so it's my pleasure to, uh, make that motion. But it really is, once you see this stuff and you realize, you know, the things that you could use in the town, within the town, that just make life easier for its citizens, and it's, it's such a basic thing. And uh, so it's, it's too bad you won't get the opportunity to do that at least this year, but within the next while you will. But at any rate, I'll certainly move, make that motion.
Okay. Seconded by councillor Lesser? Questions called? All those in favor, Jeff's laughing at me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried, thanks, folks. Request for decision building bylaw amendment. Natalie, did you want to?
So Your Worship and council, um, just presenting an amendment to the building bylaw. Um, one of the things that, uh, as part of the review, and the reason why we're bringing it forward, is that the current bylaw doesn't provide sufficient transparency to the public, uh, as well as providing more clarity, uh, in the role of the building officials. So this is an opportunity to add a little bit more detail as to the process at the different stages of, uh, in the building permitting process. Um, and with that, uh, if you go to the town's website, we've also created a building guidelines package, checklists, et cetera, to make it easier for developers, citizens, and businesses to work with us on the permitting issue. So um, I am humbly recommending to move forward with amending the building bylaw.
Okay. So the recommendation is that council amend the building bylaws recommended by staff. Does anybody have any questions on this one? Okay. Second? Good?
Very first line, one point zero recommendation. You have two thats.
Yeah, mine too.
Must have been a hiccup.
Okay, gotcha.
Apologize for that.
No, it's just, it's important, it's important to smile, it's important to smile at an, at an important day.
Alrighty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Uh, fishery group budget.
Uh, Your Worship, um, it's not news to anybody that there's, there are certain tensions and, and uh, situation in our, in our region, uh, where um, our indigenous fishers are exercising, uh, their treaty rights, and there are concerns in the non-indigenous, uh, fishing community, and there are stresses in, in our community in general. Those things are being worked on by people other than, other than in this room, but, but your role as community leaders is to, is to make sure that those that are in the positions to make decisions are considering things broader than just the fishery itself, considering the impact on our communities, both in terms of safety and in terms of, uh, the economic impact of, of decisions they're, they're charged with making. The mayors and wardens from Digby, Shelburne, and Yarmouth County have met uh, and talked about uh, these issues, and, and in fact requested and received uh, a meeting with Minister Jordan to talk about their specific concerns around public safety and, and, and the fishery and, and our economy. There, it was agreed or, or proposed by the group that they, uh, they make sure that, that the community voice is not lost in, in the discussions that are happening in Ottawa and in other places. And uh, they have proposed to engage a communications firm for a few months to help with making sure that the local communities broadly, um, perspective, not, not one side or the other on the fishery-related issues, but more broadly, the stresses and, and concerns of our, of our broader community um, be communicated and make sure they're, they're present, um, at, with the stakeholders and, and in the media. So uh, they've received a proposal from a firm that is, uh, is very capable uh, of assisting in this, in this job based on the experience of the principals involved. Uh, the cost of the proposal, essentially the cost based on a, a, a funding, uh, formula of population and uniform assessment, which is a pretty standard municipal sharing, uh, formula, would have the town of Yarmouth spend about $2,000. And so, uh, I'm asking you, without providing you a copy of that proposal, because I think there's some of that information within the proposal that we don't want to put it out into the public domain, but I'm certainly making it available to you on a confidential basis. Uh, the request is for $2,000 from the town of Yarmouth to support that regional effort. My understanding is that every municipality within the region now has, has made the decision to support that. Uh, the deadline was, was Monday, but we weren't meeting till Wednesday, and so, uh, I said we'll, we'll deal with it then. Uh, so that is what we're looking for, is, is $2,000 to be allocated to that, uh, that communication effort for the region.
Good. Well, yeah, we got to do it. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Correspondence, yeah, thanks Jeff. Correspondence for Action Municipal Affairs and Housing, uh, re-Western Regional Housing Authority rep. So, um, I called Diane Adams, and she's very interested in staying on board. Uh, she didn't, I think she didn't go to the last meeting because, um, that term was kind of up and everything was up in the air. So, uh, yeah, so I would recommend that we, we keep her on. Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
Is, is there any reason why we shouldn't keep her on? I don't, I'm, I'm-
I would, I would say no, I, I would say given COVID and everything like that, and that, it, it, given COVID and, and the lack of being able to do anything, matched equally with the fact that it would be really great to have somebody at the table that's already versed in this because it's the housing, and it's important to us. Um, she's excited to continue.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, and then the next time, um, the next time we can go out again.
Make the motion.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship.
You're welcome. So I'm looking for a motion to accept. Okay, deputy? Seconded by Jim, okay? Any more discussion on that one? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Uh, Yarmouth Dog Park Association, uh, wayfinding signage? Go ahead.
Uh, Your Worship, uh, this letter is from a not-for-profit society- Your worship, this letter is from a not-for-profit society that has worked well with the town in terms of developing a dog park, and I think it's a very well-used dog park. As the letter indicates, there's a good relationship between staff and the society in terms of getting some of the amenities they want implemented. But the request in this, in this letter, what they're asking is some assistance with wayfinding signage. Your worship, this staff hasn't taken a look at this and developed a recommendation, so maybe it would be appropriate to refer it to staff and ask for a recommendation in terms of how we could incorporate, based on our current wayfinding signage system, how we can incorporate some assistance for the dog park.
Okay. I have no problem with that. Can we maybe send the Dog Park Association a letter and let them know we're doing that? So, we don't end up on social media like we have before?
If a motion is approved by counsel, we can endeavor to do that, yes.
Thank you. Am I being too blunt?
Nope.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead there, Counselor Lesser. Oh, I'm sorry. I hit the button.
There you go.
Oh, that's because Counselor, the deputy was on.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd make a motion that we defer this for staff to have a look at, and that in the meantime, we, if it's approved, we at least let them know what's going on. And I agree that we don't want any bad social media. I think there has been some of that happening, and we have a good partner here, and I think we need to continue to work with them, so.
We agree. Go ahead, Deputy.
Just a question about the light that was supposed to be installed. Did anything move forward on that, or are we still kind of in the works?
The light in the dog park, Chad?
I believe that was the social media stirrup, so if we can address that, it might be a good thing.
I don't follow social media, so I don't...
I don't blame you, sir.
You want the smart ones.
Yeah, I've been working with the Dog Park Committee or Association. They had originally sourced a solar-powered light a year ago. However, with solar-powered lights, the market's not that big in this end of the nation, so the light that they had sourced, the company is no longer open. So, I've reached out locally to source a solar-powered light. I have sourced one. It's just a matter of budget now. They decided to start with one light at a time. I don't necessarily advise that. It'd be nice to know what the, what the specifications are, like how much of the dog park that they actually want to light up, but I guess we're going to take this one step at a time. So, I have sourced a light, and I've got ahold of a contractor here just earlier this week to give us a price on the installation, so.
Timeline's very...
It's in the works. It's just, like anything, it takes a little bit of time.
Perfect. So, yeah, just seeing that on Facebook and reading this letter, it seemed like at one time we were good partners, and sometimes, you know, things get out there and it doesn't look that way. So, I think sometimes for the public to know where we're at with things, and that we are trying to work with people and not being thrown under the bus is a good thing, right? So, thank you.
So, what was the recommendation? What did we? Okay. So, did we make that motion already? We did. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. I get lost. Yasta regarding the tourism industry support. Okay. So, this one, and there's been, it's yasta, actually, there's a six o'clock caller. You on that, Wade?
I'm supposed to be.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, me too. And I may not, and I may not make it.
Yeah.
So, in, I mean, I'm sure everybody's read this letter. What they're asking here municipally is ensuring municipalities extend the provincial property tax assistance program to impacted businesses on the same terms the province offered to the municipalities. So, that's what they're asking, but we, I mean, we can discuss that, but... I don't, I mean, we can't discuss clients or anything, and we can't discuss tax customers. But I, I mean, I guess we'd be interested in knowing if somebody needs this, if they needed it, because I know that anybody that is in need can certainly, tax-wise, set up a payment arrangement. Correct, Jeff? Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so, payment arrange, so, as it relates to taxes, so, right now, I can say that there's very little owing from any fixed roof accommodation in town on taxes, largely because the province came out with a program that I think offered a 25% rebate to fixed roof accommodations, but one of the conditions was the taxes had to be paid up. So, we got all of our taxes paid up, and they got 25% of the money back from the province, which I think is a nice arrangement, to put the proper incentives in place to protect the municipalities and put something back in the pockets of fixed roof accommodations that are hurting. There's no question about that. I thought I saw, end of last week, that the federal government was coming out with another program, but it was, it was, the Prime Minister was speaking about it, but it hadn't been announced yet. It was in the works, and so I did hear property taxes were a part of that, and something in my, I wasn't watching, I was kind of listening and doing something else, but it seemed to me that there was something in the area of 65% possible through there. So, you know, there are considerations being given, and it is a serious issue for fixed roof accommodations, I'm sure, across the country. Nobody's traveling, and so they're hurting. As far as the, what we do currently, so, we have reduced our tax interest rate to 10% down from, I believe we were at 16.
16 or 18, yeah?
Yeah, so.
14 at one time, it was 14.
So, it's gradually come down. It was 18 at one time. It's 10% now, and that was because we expected that some people might find themselves having to go into arrears, and we, although we didn't want to incentivize it by going too low, we wanted to at least show some understanding by reducing it by 4%,. As it turns out, as Jerry, Director of Finance, reported earlier, our taxes receivable are lower than they were last year. So, people did pay their taxes, and maybe partly because of different incentives that were out there. And maybe it's because people feel that that's an important bill to get paid, and they made sure it got done. I don't know. If somebody does fall behind in their taxes, so our current policy is that we go to tax sale after two full years in arrears. The furthest you can go under the MGA is three full years. We brought that back to two years, a few years ago, when our tax arrears was getting beyond 10%, and we thought, and we thought, and the government also felt that that was starting to get concerning, and so that we've been able to bring our receivables down to about half of that at this point. So, that's worked in terms of getting taxes paid. But if you're two years in arrears and you can't make your tax bill, like you can't make it good, and you're at risk of going up for tax sale, we do have a policy where you can go on a monthly payment plan. And it is the, what's the term? It's kind of a last reprieve or a last opportunity to go beyond two years in arrears, and you're making payments on a monthly basis. You're going to play catch-up for a few years, but we've had very good success with those arrangements where people who find themselves in that position are making their payments, and they're getting themselves into a better spot. The deal with those arrangements is if you miss a payment, then you get put on the tax sale list. Like, it is a, it is a last hope for people in terms of being able to not be in that tax sale position, and it seems to have met the need in terms of what we've experienced to this point. All that aside, you know, COVID, you know, we don't know what next year's going to look like. You know, Jerry and I had a discussion about this, you know, what do we think, and what are the right levers for counsel to use to help businesses? And the first one we go to is the interest rate itself. And with that, it's a delicate balance, right? You go too low, and people, now it's more, it's an inexpensive borrowing opportunity, but we certainly don't want to incentivize people to put their home or their commercial property at risk, you know, because none of us know exactly how COVID is going to play out over the next couple of years, so. But giving people a bit of a reprieve on that interest rate if they have to pay other bills, put food on the table, or what have you, ahead of paying their property taxes, at least if they find themselves in that position, a slightly lower interest rate will provide some level of relief. There is a program with the provinces set up that we can borrow money for up to three years at a low interest rate for, and that program is for towns and municipalities, and what led to it was an anticipation that maybe taxpayers aren't going to be able to pay their bills, and that's very concerning if it gets to a high degree, because we need cash to pay, you know, pay our bills on time. And if we deplete our reserves, then, you know, we could ourselves have a solvency issue. So, they put, they made that lending pot of money available through the Municipal Finance Corporation. As it turns out, very, very few people accessed, very few municipalities accessed it, and those that did, very few businesses or individuals applied for a loan to defer their taxes over a few years. So, you know, that is available, but we have not accessed it, and we have not developed a bylaw to use it. You know, that is, that is something we could consider, but I think there's, your next tax bill is coming out in the spring, you know? We're several months of COVID experience away from that. We don't know what other programs might arise from other levels of government. What our experience has been as municipalities is that the federal government and the provincial government have been directing their support not to us, but to our taxpayers, to businesses and to individuals, so helping with people who lose their jobs, or helping businesses that have, that need loans or money to operate. So, and that ultimately helps us, right? If people are able to pay their bills, then they pay their taxes, we're funding. So, you know, I'm not concerned that there isn't a lot available to us, because what I see is they're helping the people who are in our community, who ultimately look after paying their tax bills. So, if we run into a situation this year where those supports aren't sufficient, and we see our receivables, you know, our taxes receivable being delayed, or, you know, the tax bill's not being paid, you know, we can, we can, we can look at that, see what, you know, what these opportunities can do for us. It's, when we made the decision last year on the tax interest rate, I believe we were probably in April at that point.
It was, it was pretty close to the beginning, because we didn't know what would happen.
Yeah, so, no, nobody owes interest on our taxes until, I think, June, right? So, as the bill goes out, there's a due date, and you have a time by which you can pay, and then that interest begins to accrue. So, we have a bit of time. There's no, you know, I know they're concerned, this industry is concerned, and they've been hit hard, and, you know, they're...
Yeah, yeah.
But it's across the country, and I hope that the response that's needed to support the infrastructure, you know, the hotels, I hope that that support comes as it should, provincially and federally, because they have, frankly, they've got more resources and more levers they can use to deliver the assistance.
So, Wade, are you good with that? Like, you can explain that tonight if I'm not on that call?
Sure.
I might not make it on. They want us to go to the 1.1. That's just...
Can't, Jeff.
They can't.
No.
Okay. Counselor Hatfield.
Jeff, can you just clarify what it is that they're actually looking for from us? Because there's a lot of stuff in this letter that...
Yeah, so, all of this is...
Difficult to go through, kind of...
It's all different programs, so what they're, the line that I'm taking out of this is, so as NSFM, we went to, we went to the province, and we said, we have no idea because of COVID if people are going to be able to even pay their taxes, right? Because it was in the beginning, it was before SERB, it was before, you know, all the programs came out. And the bottom line is, while people don't like me to say it, that the town is run like a business as well, right? We just, we have to provide services. And so, if we don't get our tax money, we can't, as Jeff would say, you have to pick, do you stop policing? Do you stop fire? Do you stop picking up garbage? You can't, you can't. We have to provide all those services. So, the province, through the province, there was a pot of money, $380 million, from Municipal Finance, that if we needed it, we could tap into it at a low interest rate, but it was to bridge taxes if people couldn't pay their taxes. So, they're just saying they want us to pass that on to our people at that rate. That's just not, we're not, we don't have the issue that, we've already done, we've already changed our interest rate, and to Jeff's point, and fairly, if you, if you just say, you know, this much interest rate, everybody will want a piece of that, and we're not, we're getting the taxes in. That 25% that just came out was a huge help, because if you can decrease your taxes by 25% by paying them, that got people to pay them, and it's a win. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, you know, they're looking for relief, and they need it.
I do.
And when they look at us, they know that what the province did was basically set aside a pot of cash, that if we need to borrow, we can borrow from it, but we need to repay it in short term, three years. And they're saying, well, if that's what we can get from municipalities, then that's what we should ask for. Now, the program that the province came out with, the 25%, I thought that was brilliant. It probably wasn't enough in terms of the cash that they need, the rebate, but what the province did is effectively they helped us, but they also helped the business. And I think if they, if they continued in that way, I think that's exactly what these businesses need, is they need the burden of the tax bill to go away, at least for the largest extent to go away.
Which we can...
They're asking for time here. They're not saying we don't want to pay our taxes. They're saying, give us time and low interest. But I think what I worry about is we don't know how this is going to play out over time, and I hate to see people dig a hole that then becomes nearly impossible to dig out of. You know, that industry has been devastated. I think the rebate was brilliant, because it relieves the burden in all senses, but maybe not enough of the burden. So, I wouldn't say that we wouldn't go there, because I don't have a crystal ball, but we didn't recommend borrowing that money last year, because we thought taxes would get paid, and they did.
And they did.
I'm not, I'm not, you know, I don't have a crystal ball shined up to make a prediction on next year, but when it gets to be time, like, you know, everything's on the table in terms of consideration to support, to support our community.
Does that help, Heather? Yeah. Okay, so what do we need to do with this?
Your worship, for now, you know, this issue is not something that isn't on our radar, so I think to acknowledge the letter and to indicate that we've referred the matter to, I mean, you can refer it to budget, because around the time we're approving our budget is around the time when any decisions would have to be made around what we could do here, and obviously would have in itself a budget implication. So, maybe we refer this to budget and advise them that we're continuing to monitor the situation.
Okay. Because you're going to have to explain this.
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Wish me luck.
So, you know, I'm, yeah. Yeah. And you can always, you can always send him a note, but, but, yeah, okay. We're good. All right, so, motion to refer to budget. Okay? Seconded? Yep, okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Byron's taken care of. Thanks for making that change, folks. Distributed thank yous from the chamber and life skills. There's nothing there. So, the addition... yous from, uh, the chamber and life skills. There's nothing there. Um, so the additions, the, the hundred meal update, uh, Mike and I are going to do a press release. Um, we have to cancel. There's no way we can safely do it. Um, and we certainly can't, uh, yep, we certainly can't police the different organizations to make sure that all those protocols are in place. I think things are going to tighten up even more than, than they are right now. So, um, we really need to do that. A couple other things, and Deputy, are you, you're gonna share something that you're thinking? But before you do that, um, I, I did call Brenda Hattie today, because that's one of the most important things, and Brenda is going to do the Christmas dinner. Um, it'll be takeout and delivery only. They can't, they understand that they can't do that either. Um, it's 24 years running, and I get goosebumps. And, um, so they will, they are looking for volunteers to, obviously to make deliveries. Uh, so anybody from council that wants to do that, you can give her a call. I've got her number, and I will post something, uh, probably tomorrow morning to send out, um, to put out her information for folks that want to volunteer. Uh, but they will be, uh, fully, you know, under the protocols of, of COVID, and they will be doing that. She said they had 391 that they served last year, so I'm sure it'll be up over 500 this year. Um, donations as well, I'd say, you know, if people want to donate, they can do that. So, so she'll take care of that. I'll say this, not that we can fix it, but if anybody has any ideas, my biggest cons, my second biggest concern, we want to feed people. Um, and the idea behind the hundred meals obviously was so that if, if you have a hot meal a day for 100 days in a row, you can take $5 a day and put it towards your power bill, or, you know, buy more food for your family, or medications, whatever the case would be. Um, that's one issue. I can say right now, for me, my biggest concern right now is mental health, because people, people didn't go for the food, except when council was cooking. [laughing] Um, they went for the, the social aspect, and, and it really, it really hits me hard that there's seniors and other folks out there that counted completely on the hundred meals in those 100 coldest, darkest days of winter to be around people. So, I'm just trying to figure out a way to set, set up a support system where people understand you need to reach out to each other, and maybe, uh, figure out a way to do it in a formal, in a formal manner, because we can't, we, people can't lose touch. That's my biggest fear right now, the mental health, and, you know, try to tap into the mental health system in Yarmouth. Good luck with that. So, um, it's huge. So, we just need to be thinking about that. Uh, okay, so Deputy, you had something in your...
Uh, yeah, just, um, around the same thoughts as, uh, what you just said, and the importance with, uh, Christmas coming up, and we know, um, some people might be going through some financial difficulties. So, I talked to the good people at South End Red and White, and they're currently coming up with a way that, um, basically there'll be two options. Um, one for maybe a single family, or people that are less than three, um, and then four to eight people, uh, maybe $25 for one kind of basket, and $50 for the other. The smaller basket would include like a ham dinner, or roast chicken dinner with all the fixins. And then the bigger basket would be, uh, a turkey dinner that could feed a bigger family, and, uh, just waiting for price points and exactly what would be included in that. And what we'll do is put a plea out to the, um, the public, much like we did last year, to support the 100 meals, anyone who'd like to sponsor. Um, I've talked to some local churches who also know some names and whatnot, just so we're all on the same page and not kind of working against each other. And they can kind of vet who needs one and who doesn't. So, basically, just an option that we'll be able to raise some money and make sure some people have some, some Christmas meals. And with COVID and whatnot, we can drop that right after the door, and they can take care of that themselves. So, just kind of in the works at the most, in the moment, I've got a few texts here I see coming in about it. But, um, once we know the full information, we'll post something, and then hopefully the community will step up as they always do. And while I'm speaking on that, I, I've seen some things that Counselor Lesser's doing as well, kind of around the same thing, to take care of some needs. So, kudos to you for getting involved in that, too. But I just think it speaks of our community when there's a need, as Derek can say, and as we've all seen, people always step up, so.
Yeah. So, so the question that I was gonna ask Jeff was, this is, um, we were just wondering, like, if, if a, if an organization wanted to donate and get a tax receipt, can they do that through the town without this being a town event? We don't want this to be a town event for various reasons. Okay, thank you. So, he'll get you that answer. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
Well, I'm just wondering, I, I know that the, uh, the VON also has a frozen meal program, um, where they, I think it's $5 a meal, and they'll deliver, and they're very substantial and healthy meals, and they're, they come frozen, and I think they deliver like, uh, a number at one time, so it's not like a daily delivery. But I wonder if that could be coordinated to involve them as well, because I know that, that program is active, and I think they, they're delivering as far away as Digby and Shelburne as well.
So, do they, what's the parameters? Like, is it just if you, if you are in need, or is there like some kind of process, or...
Well, it's a cost recovery. I mean, if they're charging $5, I think, a meal, so...
Yeah.
I can look into that. I'll be talking to Sandra tomorrow, and I can get the information, and I'll circulate that to you.
I, I would, I, I think the question for me around that one is, what, um, what are the parameters, so that we know, is it only people that are, um, under VON care, or something like that, so we know we're not missing people?
Yep, I'll check into that, and I'll get back to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. We, we should coordinate all, all these, coordinate all these. So, are we good? Go ahead, Derek. Go.
I'm a little bit confused. That, we're, we're not doing 100 meals this year, period.
We can't.
We, and I understand why, but we're talking about making donations to, is this just for the Christmas? And I know that Derek is doing other, other...
Yeah.
So, those are the two, like, respectfully, I make donations, and I don't always do it, you know, as you're suggesting, but, uh...
Yeah.
But I, but I just want to know, so I'm, I'll be looking for people in need, and organize, work with Derek or, or Steve, and do the donation as I always do, quietly.
And, exactly. And, and to get, what Gil was saying about the VON...
I was aware of that.
Because the VON may not just, it's not just Christmas, right? We're talking about a meal, right? I don't know what you're doing. You're talking about a meal? Like, uh, go, just...
Um, yeah, we're just, we're looking for donations, um, just to help families out that are, that are struggling, not necessarily for Christmas, but, um, it's, it's turned into something a little different than we envisioned, I guess. And, uh, a few families had reached out about getting Christmas ornaments and that type of thing. And, um, surprisingly, I thought we might end up with stuff delivered at our house that was, you know, I hate to say it, but we thought maybe some people would be throwing things out, and we'd walk into that. And the stuff that's coming in is just, it's phenomenal. Um, people are really giving some incredible things. Um, so these are families that, you know, don't have a Christmas tree. I just found out today. I didn't realize, if you live in housing, uh, you have to have an artificial tree. You can't have, uh, a real tree because of fire safety. I, I, it's what I was told. Um, so, I'm not sure if, if you're living in housing, if you can, you know, you might not be able to afford to get a tree. So, there's lots of like, you know, there's trees coming in, and ornaments, and that type of thing. Um, the big, it started off to try to get food and groceries, so we, each family could get a bag of groceries. And I know, like, I really want to promote the Food Bank as well. That's, that's doing a really good job, um, the Tab of the Center, all the, like, all the groups that are currently doing it, the Salvation Army. This isn't to take away from it. Um, this was, actually, Dr. Brian Moses had posted about it, and I just copied the post, and it, it seemed to have taken off. But, um, this is an anonymous way, so you don't have to feel, like, I know some people are saying that they feel possibly awkward going to the Food Bank, um, or they don't want to be seen there. Um, just, they don't want people know, to know their business, I guess. And this is, it's just dropping stuff off to their house, and, um, nobody has to know anything about it. Um, so, you know, I, I've, I have a bit of concern that we're overlapping, and that we might be duplicating some of what we're doing. Um, but I'm trusting that people are trying to abuse the system, and, uh, if they're, you know, if they're hungry, I'm sure they'll make good use of what we're, we're able to give.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's helpful. That's helpful. Because, because for me, if, if the, uh, there's that, and the Christmas one will be taken care of because of the dinner and this piece, but in the middle, in the meantime, because that hundred meal, I mean, people started to count on it, right? So, for 100 days in a row, what do you do? So, if it's VON, and we can pump, the community can pump money into there and get some extra, you know, stuff like that. I think we can pull everything together and, and help the community. And to your point, you can't throw the baby out with the bathwater, right? There's always, people will take advantage, but it's, that's okay. That's all right. Okay, good. I feel better. All right, um, deer population, that would be you there.
I know. Um, sorry, folks, I, the, the new ones to council probably haven't heard me go on and on and on about this, but, uh, it's become a broken record with me. And, uh, yesterday, a friend of mine smashed his car running into a deer on Pleasant Street. Um, he's okay, shaken up, the, the car is a mess, and the deer isn't doing too well either. Um, but we really, I, I, I've been saying it over and over again. I know we, we made a move in that we've, uh, put in a, a bylaw about not feeding animals, basically, and it's a, it's to discourage people from feeding deer. But the population lately, just seems in the last month or two, maybe it's because I'm traveling at night more, but I, I see them everywhere in town. I see them more in town than I do when I'm traveling in other, uh, down the highway. And so, I don't know what to do, but I'm thinking that maybe I'd like to make a motion right now for staff to investigate something that's going to be very, very controversial. And that is, as I look directly at, watching him giggle. But, uh, we should look at figuring out a way that does, does, we've had, we've had the Department of Resources, Natural Resources, in to talk about it before, and I haven't found them particularly helpful. No, no offense, and all due respect to them. But, uh, we're gonna have to look at a way to perhaps, um, tranquilize deer, really get in there, and tranquilize deer, have them, you know, transferred out, something. Something has to be done. We have a problem here, and it needs to be taken care of. Um, I see that, uh, Jeff has his light on, uh, so I'll, I'll let him speak.
Okay, Jeff, and then Heather.
Yeah, so, um, for those of you who don't know, uh, and I'm sure Wade does, uh, Truro had a, um, a plebiscite on an urban deer hunt, uh, with the municipal election, and it failed. There will be no urban deer hunt in, in the town of Truro. And that's probably a good news story.
Yeah.
Um, but, but, um, so when, when Lands and Forest Representative was with us, it seemed to me that, that everything that, that they could do around maybe changing the bag limit, or, or things that they could do to try and decrease the deer population, depended on us verifying the population. They wanted us to count the deer to, to be able to provide the evidence that, in fact, we've got an overpopulation. So, we might have to play the game, uh, right? We might have to play the game.
One less.
Right, one less. Uh, we might have to, to actually organize, figure out how to organize a deer census, and, uh, and provide that data to, to Natural Resources. My understanding is from the presentation, it, it, sorry?
I thought they did the census.
Uh, no, I got the sense that they, they were suggesting that, that it would be organized by us. They could help us. They know the methods. But we would probably have to recruit volunteers to count deer and report, and, uh, and then we would have, I mean, it seemed to me that that's what they were getting at, is give us, give us a number, and, and then we can act on it.
Yeah, it was, they were very dismissive, in all honesty, I felt. And, uh, yeah, okay. So, if we have to play the game, I, I ask you this question. If we have to play that game, then what's our next step? Do I make a motion to have, uh, staff investigate the possibility, or how this would be done?
Yeah, I think that's exactly the motion, because we don't know how to do it. But if you task staff to investigate how we do a deer census or deer population study, uh, we'll engage with Natural Resources, find out, uh, bring it back, maybe with a recommendation on, on how we would implement it. It, it seems to me it will require a call out to volunteers in the community, but I think there's probably enough people concerned about it that, uh, that maybe we wouldn't have such a tough time finding those volunteers.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, Heather, you hold it?
Um, yeah, Wade, I'm really glad you brought that up. When I was campaigning before the election, that was the number one issue that came up. It wasn't housing, it wasn't sidewalks, streets, paving, it was deer consistently. And I think, I agree, something needs to be done. It is just, they're just, they're running the town, really. They're, you know, they're on down at Tim Hortons, they're in the parks, they're down on Main Street. I mean, they're drinking your coffee. I mean, they are everywhere. You know, there's like, there's 15 on my daughter's front lawn all the time, and, and Brunswick Street Extension. You walk on the, on the, um, on the trail, I go walking on the trail, and, you know, it's nothing to see, 15, 20. You know, you can't, I don't feel safe, I don't, the humans don't bother me walking at night, but I'm always scared that a deer, I'm gonna startle one, and they're gonna jump out, and they're gonna inadvertently hit me, and I'm gonna end up with a broken hip or something. So, um, I think it is time that we did something, and I, I, um, I think we're gonna have to come up with a creative so, solution, and I don't think we're gonna get a lot of negativity about it. There will be some people that won't like it, but that's with everything. But I think people are really getting disgusted. It's, it's affecting your summer life, your, your people's ability to garden, to, to, to enjoy their backyards, and, um, I just think it's time.
Would it be possible to talk to the province about, uh, taking off the, uh, no shooting of does? I know they do probably get a little money for the, uh, doe tags and whatnot, and I realize that's out of, out of town, so it might not be our discussion to have. But I know a lot of hunters and whatnot, and you would think if there's not mamas to have babies, and there wouldn't be producing problems to come in town to be able to do that. So, maybe there, I mean, that has been in effect for a very long time, and if that was to save deer populations, then that worked very well. And I think it's time, maybe, for that, I don't know if we would write a letter, or what, what could be done, but maybe that's something they could consider, at least for our area. Seems to be all over, for that matter.
So, so your worship, just on that, that was one of the things that was brought up when they were here, and the response was that they, you know, if they knew the population was, if they knew there was an overpopulation, then they would consider that sort of policy change.
So, we have to go to...
So, it all comes back to, it seemed that it all came back to doing a population study.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
I guess, uh, a couple things. I, I wouldn't be in favor of, of opening a hunting season in town, obviously. Um, I, I think it sounds, you know, quite barbaric, and surprised that Truro even put it out there. But, um, I, I do think there's probably a safe way to do this, um, respecting the animals' rights. And I, I know, I've heard that if you, uh, move deer to a different spot, they find their way back.
Yeah.
But I'm sure there's a spot somewhere far enough away that they might not find their way back. Um, we want people to come here, not...
Truro, yeah.
Truro, yes.
Oh, boy.
Um, and it, and actually, I heard PEI has no deer.
They don't.
If we could get them across the, the bridge, they could, they could love those animals for a while. Um, but obviously, I, I, I don't think we want to have people walking around with, uh, bows and guns in town. And, you know, I think the idea of, you know, tranquilizing them and moving them somewhere, my concern with the count would be, like, when I leave here tonight, I'm sure it'd be, as the last couple times I've left here at night, I'm gonna see probably five or six just on my few minutes. Actually, last time, I think, uh, three of us were outside, and there was one over at the Senate half. Um, and then I went down Water Street and saw three by Tim Hortons, once again. Um, the, the issue would be, I might count three or four, but, uh, Gil might be counting the same three or four, and Heather might be. So unless you, like, I'm, I'm not sure how you would possibly count. We, like, we know, every, you can ask any single person in this town, "Is there a deer problem?" And they're gonna say yes. Or unless they really like the deer here, they're gonna say, "There's not a deer problem." But we definitely know that we're being overpopulated in, within the town boundary of deer. Um, and I know it's, you know, it's probably something we have to do, figure out a way to count them. I just have, I don't, can't figure out how you could possibly count them. If, if you could, hunting would be much more successful. Like, tracking deer isn't that easy, or people would, would shoot their deer every year if they were a hunter. Um, so I, I think that part might be a little difficult to do, but it would be nice. We, I, I agree 100%. It was the number one issue that I heard, and I think all of us heard, um, and I, people would like us to act on it in some ways, so.
Maybe when you're feeding the deer, you could wrap a little pink bow or something. Anybody with a bow is a count. They are. They are. It's wild, go ahead there, Gil.
Um, well, first, I think there has to be a recognition by a lot of people that these deer aren't wild, they're not coming into town because of clearcutting or coyotes, these are urban population, are actually born and bred in town. So, these are not first generation deer that are roaming our streets. I asked somebody recently, how do you do that very thing? How do you count deer? He said it's as easy as counting their legs and dividing by four, which means it's an impossible task. I've had, on my lawn, I've had eight at one time, and I went for a walk with my wife recently, we counted eighteen in about twenty minutes, and they weren't the same deer. So, it is at a hand, but, you know, to think that these are deer that are being forced into town from- from outside, not true. And my son-in-law struck a buck in Main Street here, he left the Bank of Commerce and got his far- his farmer saving, struck a buck and killed it on- on Main Street, so it is- it is a serious problem.
Yep.
We've gotta figure out a way to prove this.
I mean, you know- you know what? I mean, to- to that point, we- we lost one life, right?
We can't have anymore.
And- and it's just another ti- it's a matter of time. We did. Yeah. So, what's the solution there, C A O? What are we gonna do?
I'm going out with my coffee.
If there was an easy solution, like, it would be looked after already, right? There is not an easy solution, which there was. You know, the advice we got from Natural Resources, they're far more expert in deer than I am, the advice they gave was to do a deer population survey, and, you know, I- I think, you know, Gil- Gil's method would get you a number for sure, but, and I, you know, I don't know how they do it, but they do, so let's find out how, and we'll report back to counts.
That sounds fair.
I'm sure there's some factor of duplication of count, but maybe they, you know, they have areas that people count on a regular basis over time, and you arrive at a number. I mean, it- it's not an absolute, like, like, twenty is okay, but twenty-one is too many. I think it's a- it's just kind of an, almost an order of magnitude, like, how big is this problem, and it sounds like the problem is pretty big.
Twenty-two would be good.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, you know, is it twenty or is it two hundred? And if it's, you know, closer to two hundred, I'd say you definitely got a problem, and it sounds like it's closer to two hundred.
I think it is, and I think, you know, according to Strang's rules, we need to start finding them a thousand bucks a piece for gathering in crowds. Sorry, it's just, it's so frustrating, because over here, it's the number one thing that we've been told, and over here, it's like, save the deer, because we clearcut, I mean, you can't, we have to do what's right.
One of the issues we have as a town, and- and you know this, Your Worship, is- is when one of the reps came and- from Natural Resources and met with us, essentially, if this problem were outside of our bound- if this was a problem in the Hebron-Daten area, they'd look after it.
Yeah, see?
Yes. It's because we're a town, they don't have jurisdiction. So- so, we said, so we said, I think we wrote to Minister and- and said, we- we cede our authority, come in and, uh, take the authority for- for wildlife and- and deal with this issue. It's, you know, and they don't- they don't really have an answer. When Truro was resorting to literally an urban hunt in downtown as a viable option. Yeah, but a hunt downtown. That tells you how desperate.
They're desperate. Now, they have, what do you call it, the, uh, the water tower spot or something, they've- that's it, yeah, they've got a- they've got space, but, okay. So, are you okay? Do you want a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. You can discern what that is. We're tired. Okay, Ocean- Oceanographic Institution, which is what I- don't know what that is.
Okay, well, I- I'm- we're starting to get late, so I'm- I'm not gonna do too long a preface, but over the last while, myself and a few others, Councilor Lesser has been involved in this as well, Alan Whittaker, a few others, have been quietly working on a concept of having an oceanographic institute here in Yarmouth. Remember, if you- if you do remember, when we went through the exercise of having a waterfront development plan in place, that was one of the suggestions. This- this is, Alan Whittaker, of course, is the- the person who's in charge of T A P, the Technical Program Using the Kids, and they've presented here before, and they're- they're an amazing group of kids. But at any rate, through that association, he got associated with a Dr. Scully, surprisingly not redheaded and didn't look like anybody from the X-Files, but Dr. Scully, Sherry Scully, is with Cove, and Cove is an institute in Halifax.
Oh, yeah.
They're looking, they were hoping to go, in all honesty, to Halifax, but there was no building. And so, Alan, I- I believe that the way things went is that Sherry approached- approached Alan, and it kind of went from there. We have been quietly discussing this for a while, she has a proposal, we've had a few meetings, Natalie has been part of this as well, as has the Ignite Institute and Doug Jones, and it looks promising. I- I hate- I hate to say this, because when things fall through, if and when, you know, you feel like you failed in some way, but it feels really good, because there's- there's the aspect, there's the peace with the Ignite, of having the actual industry as part of this, I mean, fisheries is our industry. There's the teaching aspect of it when it comes to classroom spaces, the proposal has all that, and if any of you are interested, and I apologize, I've never have kept this to myself for the most part, because I didn't feel, as it- as it bubbles underneath, I don't wanna show stuff, show my hand too quickly if- if this thing all were to fall apart, but I will forward it to all of you when I get a chance to. But at any rate, as part of that discussion, there was a suggestion that Natalie made that perhaps the Sweeney's Fisheries Museum could be part of this as well. And she made the suggestion that perhaps we could bring this up at Committee of the Whole and ask that the staff investigate, reach out to the, um, the museum and investigate whether or not they would be interested in participating in this. And so, I- it's a- I know it's very brief overview, but that's my- what I am actually gonna make a motion on, you know, whether or not we could have staff investigate whether or not the museum would be interested in any kind of a relocation to become part of this Oceanographic Institute if it were to happen.
Gosh, put it in the B I C.
So, the good nu- the good news on the Sweeney Museum is it's ours.
Aha.
So, um, well, yeah, we- we were gifted the- all- all of the artifacts, all of the, all the items within- within the Sweeney Museum, and we operate the museum, and we are a tenant of Scotia Garden.
Okay.
Yeah.
Honestly, in all honesty, I didn't realize that that was the actual setup.
That's the case.
Okay, well, then I really don't need to make a motion. Yeah, okay. What I will do is forward the proposal and some of the exchanges that we've had to all of you, so you can all see it. I find this very exciting, and I find that the idea that it's not just us, that Ignite is part of it, and that, you know, industry has a- an interest in this, and that education has a place in it, it- it feels really good. And so, fingers crossed, no promises, but it's something that we've been working on.
Love it. Cove is amazing. Okay, um, community appointments.
Well, I've got actually two issues, and I'll be very brief. One is I find myself in a conflict on two of the meetings that I've, two of the committees that I've volunteered for. When I- I was negligent, I guess, when I- when I said I would be on the Communities in Bloom and Recreation, the sheet that we were given didn't have a Recreation, the times of the meetings wasn't listed, and so I was negligent in not asking that question. So, it looks like every second month, I'm going to have a meeting at four-thirty and one at five-thirty. One here at four-thirty and one in Hebron at five-thirty, which presents a dilemma for me, so I don't know exactly how to work out that- that problem. I'm happy to serve on either or both, I prefer to be on both, but I don't expect that people should change a meeting time just for me.
But you can ask. Actually, you can ask.
Yeah, and, yeah, you can ask, but to be honest with you, I was on both, and it went fairly well, although, because Recreation changes.
Yeah, it's every second month, though, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right, well, I'll give it a try then, thank you very much, I- yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It's worth asking, Gil.
Yeah, well, thank you, I'd like that consideration. And secondly, when the issue of the Mariner Center Expansion Committee, when I noticed that that was by position and not by appointment, I would very much like to be on that committee. I think everybody knows that I've got a longstanding history with the Mariner Center, and I'm keenly interested in the expansion project out there. I also have a fair amount of experience in facility development, so I would like to be on that committee, and I have reached out to the chairperson and the- I copied, Your Worship and the warden and the municipality in, Vargillin as well in that correspondence, but if there's any way for me to have a seat at that table, I would certainly appreciate it. I understand that, you know, the meetings are open and I can attend, but attending a meeting and having a voice at the table are two different things in my mind. So, if there's any way that that can happen, I would very much appreciate it.
Okay, so, I don't know, they answered that question, they said, like, it's up to ask, but Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but the terms of that agreement right now were the mayors, the mayor and the wardens, as we get things up and running? Like, I don't- I don't- I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's- that's what we have, but there is, anybody can attend, and C A Os can bring staff as- as I- as I did last time. I think, personally, I think it's- it's more important we do the right thing than- than do things.
According to, yeah.
According to what we thought at the time.
Yeah.
You know, we've been at this for a little while, and, you know, Gil- Gil has got more experience with- with this whole file around the Mariner Center than anybody, frankly. You know, it was- it was- it was he and a group of volunteers that originally conceived of it, and, you know, he's had a- had a finger in it since before day one. So, I think it would be a waste of experience if Gil were not at the table, and a waste of an opportunity if he weren't able to speak. So, I think we, you know, we- we send that perspective, if you agree, we send that perspective to our partners and-
No, no problem.
And, you know, expect they'll- they'll understand.
Yeah, exactly. I will say this, Gil, because Duran- I invited Duran to that meeting as well, and he- he spoke.
Actually, I- I told him in my conversation that he needed me at that table.
Yeah, he's- he spoke. I mean, I- the floor was- the floor was wide open for him to say whatever he wanted to share, so, yeah. Go ahead there, Counselor.
So, Your Worship and fellow councillors, what, and Jeff, the proper procedure to get Gil to be a member, a voting member of that committee, is simply a motion on the part of our council this afternoon, or- or what is the proper procedure?
So, it's a- it's a- it's a joint committee.
It's a joint committee, which, go ahead.
So-
I know what'll happen.
So, I don't, so you just raised something that I wasn't thinking, I was thinking about the voice rather than the vote. The vote will require, certainly will require agreement. I would- I would be, so, if we're gonna add a vote on the town side, I think we'll have to-
That's what I was thinking.
Agree that we- that we agree, we suggest we enlarge the committee, the voting members of the committee, to allow for other perspectives at the table, particularly, we're concerned that- that Gil's perspective be brought to the table. And if they agree that, then it's done, there's a voice, there's a vote, and the committee is- is a little bit bigger, but that's- that's fine. If- if they're concerned about that, the- the alternative is, you know, we- we- we say, well, okay, if we can't have the vote, at least we're gonna have the voice. And if we can't have anything we want, if we can't have anything we want, then we- we have another problem.
Okay. Go ahead there, Jim.
I- I just, you know, I'm sure if I totally understood, so there's no procedure right now to-
Sorry, sorry, Jim, so make a motion to-
Yes.
To request that the size of the steering committee be increased by one councillor, or one member, let's say, from each of the three municipal units. And so, the way we would, if that motion passes, we would write to our partners and say, this is a recommendation from our council, we would explain the rationale and encourage them to- to support that, and that's all it's really required. Got that, Lindsey?
So, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? So, it's the committee, it's the expansion committee that you're after, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? Go ahead.
I'd just like to say if it- it does come down to that it is mayors and deputies and whatnot, I'd happily give my position up to Gil if, given his experience, if that, when it does fall, so, if, yeah, but a warden's in mayors, you know how sometimes we, the group of nine, so, right, but I'm just saying if that does, at least that way, you know, someone with experience is there, or, you know.
Yeah.
This is important.
Thank you for that. Jeff was asking if you were letting Gil be the deputy mayor.
Oh, dear.
Okay, so that's fair, okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. All right, um, okay, so that's all we had on there, and we have some in camera, they'll have to be quick, but-
Yeah.
Yeah, motion to go. What?
Oh, yes.
Do we need to change it? Why did we need to change it?
No, I think Jeff- Jeff explained to me, Your Worship, Jeff wondered out loud, he has, uh, too much, he doesn't have enough time to prepare properly for the Committee of the Whole meetings, and he was wondering, I interpreted what he was saying, that we could move from Wednesday to Thursday at the same time, three-thirties, to have our Committee of the Whole meetings. Is that right, Jeff?
So, the issue is- is, it, so we reissue the agenda on Tuesday afternoon, and if we're meeting Wednesday afternoon, it gives you little time to look at materials that we add to the agenda, and we don't wanna jam you, although we- we sometimes do. So, if we move the meeting to Thursday, then it's- it's a little easier for us in terms of, you know, feeling right about adding something on Tuesday afternoon and giving you an opportunity to- to prepare for your meeting. So, if- if it's okay, if it doesn't conflict with your schedules and you're willing to go Thursday afternoon, I- I- I feel better about it, I like it better, but again, it's your meeting, not mine, so.
You know what? Tis the season. Let's give him what he wants. Okay, so I'm okay with that. Is anybody not okay with that fourth, it's the fourth Thursday, right?
Yep. So-
Your motion.
Okay, so a motion?
So, the motion would be to amend the policy, to change from the third, when, fourth Wednesday to the fourth Thursday.
Okay. Moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Anything else you'd like, C A O? We're in the mood.
Uh, I have something in camera.
Yep, okay.
So, what do you think, Mr. Brophy?
Is it Mr. Brophy's staff, or he's gotta go?
Uh, well, I, how- how tight are we for time?
I'm- I'm good, I mean, if somebody has to leave, they have to leave, but Wade, if you have to go, we can update you, I know you gotta- Yeah, we're half an hour, really, half an hour late, so it's, we're good.
So, then I have two things, if you're okay, to give me another fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yes.
Okay? So, number one, yeah, we should go in camera.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah. Yeah, you made that motion a couple minutes ago.